All to order the August 15th meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three members, and I would like Ann to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. At our last meeting, we shared that one of our colleagues on our communications staff, for those that have been here, Gabby Preach tragically lost her daughter in a car accident. Gabriella is a valued part of our team here in Montgomery County, so there was truly an outpouring of support from the county to help her family in this difficult time. I want to thank my colleagues in the Controller's Office, especially Controller Sanchez. The county offered an optional donation to all, for all of our, an optional donation to all of our employees to give to this family during their, this difficult time. We had 121 individuals donate a portion of their paychecks last month to raise just under $5,000 for the Preach family. I want to thank all of my colleagues who took a little bit of their paycheck to, sorry, it's been a morning, to donate to this family, and our thoughts and prayers remain with the Preach family during this difficult time. We are proud to acknowledge the 21 county employees and two community leaders who have earned certificates of completion for their successful participation in Montgomery County's Inclusive Leadership Training Series. This eight-week leadership development program focused on enhancing inclusive leadership competencies to foster a more inclusive workplace culture. The training addressed topics including, but not limited to, bias and cultural competence awareness, inclusive communication, disability inclusion in the workplace, leading in a multi-generational workplace, and how inclusive leaders foster employee engagement. I'd like to offer a huge thank you to Donna Richmond, our Chief DEI Officer, for creating and facilitating this training series for our employees. A special thank you goes out to Gwinnett Mercy University for their partnership on this training program. Because of Gwinnett Mercy's generous support through an MOU with the county, participants were able to receive 12 continuing education credits granted by the university's Bachelor of Social Work Program. So we want to extend our gratitude to Dr. Janice Nuss, BSW Program Director at Gwinnett Mercy University. So congratulations to our colleagues who completed the program successfully, and thank you for your efforts to create a more inclusive culture where all employees and county residents receiving services from the county feel they belong and are enabled to thrive. And so do we have any colleagues that participated in the program here? Okay, come on up. We're going to take a picture. Congratulations. You have to get in the middle. Next up, this week we announced that we're fully stocking the bathrooms in all Montgomery County buildings and facilities with period products free of charge. These are literally, there are literally thousands of Montgomery County residents of menstruating age who live below the poverty level. For those who have to make tough decisions about paying bills, buying food, or looking after their health, period products often end up at the bottom of the list, even though they are essential items. These items also cannot be purchased through using SNAP or WIC. I commend Pennsylvania's First Lady Lori Shapiro for championing this issue statewide. The governor signed a state budget this year which allocates $3 million to provide free period products in schools. We are the only county in the region so far to provide free access to period products in our county buildings, courthouses, parks, and historic sites. Stocking bathrooms in county buildings helps alleviate period poverty and ensures that our most vulnerable residents, including those with limited incomes and unstable housing, feel cared for. Hopefully others will look to us and follow suit. And I was actually at one of our parks last evening, and I saw the new dispenser. So thank you to our assets and infrastructure team for getting that executed for us. And thank you to my two male colleagues for signing on to support the effort. I really appreciate it. All right, next up, a couple more things for me. Our Helping Human Services Department Back to School Drive continues through August 23rd. Anyone is welcome to donate. While backpacks are in highest demand, the drive will collect a wide variety of school supplies, as you can see on the screen and on our website. Donations will be collected across county facilities, so we've expanded it this year, including here in Narrestown, plus our satellite offices around the county. This year, the county is sponsoring Narrestown Area School District. As our K-12 students in Montgomery County begin their new school year, they need the right tools to be successful. As a product of the Narrestown Area School District, I'm grateful to our county employees and community members for contributing to this Back to School Drive, so students walking the same halls I once did will be prepared for a new year of learning. So thank you for those donations. And then last up, today we want to recognize and celebrate the valuable work of our county's summer interns. Some of our interns are with us today, and I want to thank you all for being here. So if you could stand at your summer intern? Oh, you all took all their seats. Okay. Why don't we bring, can we bring them in? They're coming? Okay.
After being on this commission for seven months, are we still interns or are we advanced?
Oh, we can claim that we're interns. That's a good idea. All right. All right. Hi, how's everyone? Thank you for being here. I didn't realize you didn't have a seat. But, all right, so I just want to share that we are grateful that you all chose to spend your summer with us, learning about the various work that we do across our departments and getting hands-on experience in public service. Our interns, for those that don't know, worked with us in the Controller's Office, the Commerce Department, the Coroner's Office, probation, assets and infrastructure, trials, and the Commissioner's Office. I want to thank you to our, send a thank you to our county staff who welcomed our interns into their teams and worked to make sure they had useful experiences, interesting projects, and real-life insights to careers in government. We hope that your time with us was helpful and enjoyable, and best of luck on your next steps as you continue your education and explore future career options. And I hope, I hope, that you're inspired to pursue careers in public service because the county needs good talent. So, any Penn Staters in the crowd? Ah, yes. All right, that's great. Main campus? All right, so we're going to go right down the line and see where you all are in school. So we'll start here. Penn State main, and you're just, can you share your name?
My name's Nature Garfunkel.
Okay, Penn State main campus, great.
My name's Amber Sims, from Gwinnett Mercy.
Great.
My name's Peyton McHugh, I go to Saint Joseph's.
Great.
I'm Grace Peterson, I go to Penn State Abington.
Great.
I'm Lexi Lane, and I go to Gwinnett Mercy University.
Awesome.
I'm Ansley Steele, I go to Trinity College.
I'm Maureen Farrell, I go to Westchester.
I'm Megan Curry, also go to Westchester.
I'm Madison Fumano, and I go to Westchester.
I'm Dakota Davis, and I go to Westchester.
I'm Burden Pierce, and I go to Penn State Lehigh Valley.
I'm Adi England, I go to Temple University.
I'm Elias DeGrae, I go to Wasdow University.
Awesome. Good. Excited to go back to campus? You're not, you're not excited to go back? I remember those days. Well, why don't you come on up? We're going to take a picture up here, and then we have some certificates for you in the back. Congratulations again. Oh, yeah, you're going to go through there once we take a picture. So we're going to have you just come down here. Slide down a little bit more. I guess we're going to have to do a Do two rows. All right.
Anybody who's shorter comes in. You guys come on up, step up. Yep, this little group, and then you guys file in the back. Step forward, everybody.
I'm going to move this chair.
There you go. Yeah, you guys can stand in the back. And you guys, you guys sit over this side, Brandon, and then
There we go.
You guys scoot in some more.
What do you think? Can you guys see everything? Except for the lady on the other side. Yeah, you guys can circle.
There we go. No, you're okay.
And then the gentleman behind Commissioner Wyder.
There we go. Thank you all. All right, so we have certificates in the back for you. Thank you. Great. Best of luck this year.
Nice to meet you. We all like that.
All right. So that concludes my comments, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Mckeisha.
Good morning, everyone. Summer Olympics wrapped up in Paris this past weekend. I felt like they just started, a little disappointed. But we had two Montgomery County natives participate in this year's Olympic Games, as we talked about in the last meeting. Ariana Ramsey from Bridgeport did bring home a bronze medal with the women's rugby 17, so let's give her a round of applause. In addition to a dramatic win in that bronze medal game against Australia, Ariana also went viral on TikTok. Her video praising the free healthcare athletes received in the Olympic Village got garnered about 200,000 views, and it was picked up across the media, so please check that out. But thanks, Ariana, for making Monco proud. I have the honor of presenting our Way to Go Monco winners for the month of August. These are county employees who are nominated for some of the great work that they're doing. First, we've got Linda Oworski, the Director of our Court Care Program. She works tirelessly to ensure that families who utilize the court childcare are provided with the highest standard of childcare and helps them navigate the court processes. They need to, to make sure their lives are better for them and for their children. She's used years of experience to make things as easy as possible for people in difficult situations. And as we've seen the Court Care Program when we announced our paid leave policy earlier this year, and it's just incredibly thankful for that, offering the service that we've provided, everything Linda does. Next, we've got John Bray, a Park Ranger in our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites. John has constantly shown he's a powerhouse of an employee. Is John here? I think he's, maybe not. Okay, anyone here, just raise your hand when I go through it. But he's passionate about Green Lane Park, and it shows every day. Recently, he was involved in a water rescue on the lake. He helped facilitate rescuing a group of friends after their boat had capsized on the water. John's colleagues say that helping people is in his blood. I don't know if Tom, were you on that boat?
No, I wasn't there.
But I want to thank John for being there and serving in the way that he has. Next is Tracy Gallagher, who is a District Court Clerk in District 38109. Tracy's been a blessing and an amazing asset to her District Court. She comes with great knowledge, multitasks with ease, and has a great work ethic. She's helpful and kind to everyone around her and does it, all the work with a smile on her face and kindness in her heart, according to her colleagues. Thank you, Tracy, for your work. And then we have Darrell Lewis, who serves as a Advocate on our Community Connections Team, which helps connect residents with the many resources provided by the county. Darrell has gone above and beyond supporting the new coordinated entry project. He's always willing to help freely, gives his knowledge to the newer staff, and is there to be supportive. He was recently recognized by Access Services for his street outreach referral notes, which are detailed, clear, and to the point. Without his support, the project would not be as successful as it is today. Finally, lastly, we'd like to honor Latoya Macusa. She's a Supervisor on our Intake Assessment Team with Senior Services. Latoya is always busy but never fails to take the time to stop and listen with anyone who has a question or needs a hand. She has so much knowledge and is a great leader that makes others want to work harder each and every day. Latoya has a smile on her face every day that is contagious, according to her colleagues. So I want to just say way to go on behalf of all of us as Commissioners, and thank you all for your great service to the county. Couple of notes from me. One, absolutely proud to support the leadership that Commissioner Wyder has showed in actually making Monco the first in the region to provide free period products in all of her county facilities. I didn't even realize that when it was coming up, and I think it's a great example of how things that seem simple can actually go a long way in making sure that we enact equitable policies that really address the needs of every member of our population, whether it's in parks, or trails, or anywhere where we come in contact in terms of service. And the other thought was, you know, this is something that you said Governor Shapiro and the First Lady had brought up at the state level, but it's really great to see that Monco is able to really take a lead in local government and how we can do that. And we're going to talk about this later, but another issue is really support for indigent defense and public defenders. And Pennsylvania was recently one of the only states that did not have any support at the state level for public defense. That changed, but we're going to do even more in Montgomery County, which you'll hear about. And finally, I want to acknowledge, difficult issue that a lot of school districts are grappling with, but there's some, there's a recent book that's really a number-one bestseller. I think it's called The Anxious Generation, Jonathan Haidt, if anyone read this. But the toll that cellphone use, social media use is having on mental health for our youth is significant and quite stark when you look at the data in terms of the issues that have arisen with mental health. And Abington School District became one of the first schools to actually ban cell phones during the school day. They require, or they're going to require students to check them in. And, you know, some, some parents are anxious about this in different ways. You want to be able to contact your kids, and you want to be able to have access to communications in the face of an emergency. But I think Abington is taking a step forward in addressing the mental health crisis amongst youth, and they should be commended for trying this out and also seeing what other steps need to be taken to make sure that, you know, our children are able to learn. And, you know, I think we have a social media case. The DA took the lead on in terms of filing a lawsuit against the companies for the algorithms that they have developed, which are really designed to keep people on the phone for as long as possible. And as a grown man with a fully-formed and functioning prefrontal cortex, I think, I still find this, I still find this quite difficult. And the reason is, is because they are, they are designed that way. And it's very important that we recognize that there are steps that can be taken, whether it's through our litigation, in the classroom, in other settings, to make sure that we are protecting mental health starting with children. So I want to thank Abington School Board for taking the measures that they have, and also acknowledge that our Mental Health Division offers programs such as Teen Talk Line, and works with county partners like NAMI and Family Works to ensure that families have access to the supports they need. So with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner DeBello.
All righty. First, I want to mention that we have Skye here today. She, although she wasn't part of the official intern program, Skye was a high school student, and we typically haven't done this much in Montgomery County before, but we tried to do something a little different. And Skye was, joined us for a few weeks over the summer as a, as a shadowing program, and maybe it's something that will evolve even further next year. But she shadowed myself and Kim in the Commissioner's Office and some events that we were at. She also spent time in President's Judge's office and shadowed some of the programs that are going on there. She shadowed some of our solicitors, and will actually conclude her time in a DA's office. So I think it was a great experience. I think it was, you know, she has a dream of pursuing law and political science in the future, so I think that she's got to see a lot over her time here. And like I said, it's not an official program, but it's something that, who knows, that we could, we could evolve to that, you know, moving forward, extension off of our intern program.
I wanted you to come up and take a picture. Let's take a picture.
Yeah, sure. Great school district. So I'm going to go through a couple of things. That it was an exciting few weeks for us as the three Commissioners. We spent a lot of time together out in our community. A few things I, events that I do want to touch on is that we were up at Pottstown, there was the Memorial Park, where there was a bridge that went over to Montany Creek that was washed out during the Ida storm a few years ago. And we were there to do a ribbon cutting. That bridge was replaced, and they were able to do that through getting a grant through the Monco 2040 program. The county provided $200,000, and then remaining cost was covered by funding from the state, as well as the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation. So as, as three of us were there, we were glad to play a part in restoring that access in Pottstown. If you're not familiar with the Memorial Park, it's a very large park that's separated by this, this Montany Creek that goes through. So when that bridge was washed out, people could not go from one side of the park to the other. So they're really excited that we were able to get that bridge back functioning again. Then we were also, Monday night, we were over at the New Hanover Township. We, we presented accommodations on behalf of the county to two amazing local 11-year-old girls, Lily and Natalie, who got the community together to save their outdoor hockey rink. The Flyers got wind of this a few months ago and donated $200,000 to give the rink a complete makeover. I mean, the rink now looks spectacular. Unfortunately, the kids were swarmed, once we got done with all our speeches, but we were going to have a little competition on the rink, but we never got to that. But both Neil and I were trying to figure out who got Jamila, so it was actually a fight between us. So we never could figure out who was going to get Jamila, so we didn't actually get able to play. But we're also, we're very happy to support spaces where kids get the exercise and learn, the benefits of being, being outside, playing all these youth activities, team sports. I mean, the Flyers, not only did they donate the rink, but they also donated equipment, and, and they did talk about the penalty box a lot. But no, it was really exciting. These two little girls are just amazing, and I think that they have a bright future ahead of them. I think, Neil, you mentioned about them getting the, running for president.
I said you should think about running for County Commissioner, just not if we're on the
Well, not while we're here, right? So no, it was good that the three of us were out there. The communities are really excited to see us there, so that was, that was exciting as well. I do want to mention that we are planning our next Commissioner/County Board Meeting on the road. As you know, in May, we had one up in Limerick. It was a tremendous success. We had over 130 people that were able to squeeze into, into the room. We had turned people away, which is good, because that showed that the community is definitely interested in hearing from us. So I think it's, it's okay now to announce that our next one that we're planning will be in October, October 10th, actually, and we're looking at Montgomery Township. So we're really excited to move forward that initiative that I, and I, I always thank my fellow Commissioners, because this was an initiative that I really wanted to have in place, and they were very supportive of that as well. August 7th was National Purple Heart Day. For anyone who might know, Purple Hearts are awarded to American soldiers who are wounded or killed in the line of duty against the enemy. For the Purple Heart recipients who are still with us, many returned from combat with life-altering injuries or disabilities. And it's our duty as elected officials to honor and support those individuals, I should actually say, support our heroes. I recently visited the Veterans Center, opened up in Pottstown by a great local group called Veterans Brotherhood. They, they went, they raised the money, and they opened up this building and this facility all through donated funds. And their, their goal is really, what I would say, they, they want to help veterans in the area of employment services, financial help when veterans are in a pinch, and most importantly, they want to have another avenue for veterans to go if they're feeling in a state where suicide becomes their last option. Unfortunately, just a few days ago, probably wasn't in the newspaper, or really communicated out there, but we had another veteran up in Pottstown in his late twenties who took his own life. He unfortunately went home and was just having, broke up with his girlfriend, and just having all kinds of emotional issues and breakdown. And he told his mom that he was just going out for a while and never returned home. And she actually went looking for him the next day and found his truck in a parking lot. And it's a very sad story, and I bring that up because it's important for us to know that, I forget the national standard, I think it's 22 veterans a day commit suicide, but it's, it's really something that we all need to be aware of, and, and we need to be supportive everywhere, everywhere we can. We, we've had presentations from local officials, and we have Monco's Own Suicide Prevention Task Force will be at our September 19th Board Meeting. So that, we'll, we'll look forward to getting information related to that as well. And finally, I just want to mention, there's, on September 26th, we'll be dedicating the Winning Tree of Lower Providence Library. The Winning Tree is a tradition where dog tags are hung from tree branches to represent veterans who have taken their own lives. So, and then finally, just to close out, I was able to attend Bridgeport National Night Out. As you know, all our communities throughout Montgomery County nationally have these National Night Outs, and unfortunately, many of them are on the same night. But we were over at Bridgeport, what was it, Wednesday night, Tuesday night? It was really great. It's, it's a small community, but they, they did an amazing job over there. We had a lot of our county services that were there, setting up tables and providing information. information. Our, our Planning Commission was there, had a board set up for people to do like, almost like a survey, getting information. So that was really cool to see. The Sheriff's Department was there and, and they were doing a presentation with the robotic dog that we, that we have. And there was, look, I mean, the most amazing or exciting part was when the state police helicopter came in and myself and all the little kids would want to run over and see the helicopter land, so that was exciting to see that coming as well. So it was, it was, it was an awesome night. The weather was great, and it was just good to be over there supporting Bridgeport on their night out. And I just want to also, sorry, close real quick. Neil McKeever, Commissioner McKeever brought up about the cell phones in school, and, you know, I sat on the school board for 12 years, and this was something that we struggled with as a board as well, because we could start to see, over that 12-year period while I was there, you could start to see what was happening to our students and how they're addicted to their cell phones throughout the day. And, you know, we were trying to, we didn't go as far as, and maybe we would have went if COVID didn't, that kind of shifted gears when COVID hit because that became our focus. But we were trying to put policies in, in place that where when kids came into the classrooms, they had to put their cell phones away. And, and it was, it was a struggle. And amazingly, these kids, they're just, they're able to text on their cell phones while it's in their pocket. I can't even text looking at it, and they can put it in their pocket and text. I mean, that's just, but I, I mean, I agree. It is a national trend, and, and I, I hope to see not only Abington, but additional school districts, not only Montgomery County, but across the state. I know other states are also looking at it, and it is, it is definitely becoming what I would call an epidemic. And, and I won't even get into the whole cyberbullying and all that, that goes on with cell phones. But again, and, you know, it's just a lot to think about. So, thank you.
All right. Can we try and get the folks that are in the corner a chair? Just, I want them to be able to sit down. Can someone try and find them a chair? Yeah, we don't want you to stand in the corner the whole time. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a presentation on Norristown Stay and Play with Kim Ramsey. Good to see you. And Cassandra Davis, good to see you as well, from the Norristown Chamber of Commerce. Come up to the podium.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioner Weiner, Commissioner McKeever, and Commissioner DeBello. And appreciate you all giving us this opportunity to talk about initiative that was actually started within the county and the support of the Norristown Chamber of Commerce. Appreciate, again, we appreciate the support here. This initiative is for local businesses here in Norristown to help, really to help them grow, sustain, and actually expand, so we appreciate the effort. Today, I'm going to actually, I'm actually Kim Ramsey, the President and CEO of the Chamber, and also a business owner, Rick and Kim LLC, that's been in Norristown for 14 years. So we really appreciate this. I'm going to bring up Cassandra Davis, who has been key, instrumental in bringing all the stakeholders together and really getting this initiative off the ground. She's going to give you some updates and how we're moving this effort forward, and we really need everyone's support in this effort. So thank you again for the time.
Thank you so much, Kim. It is a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity. So Stay and, again, I'm Cassandra Davis, and I am passionate about seeing small businesses grow, giving them resources to grow, and helping them to really thrive in the economy that we have right now. I currently work with the Chamber, helping their businesses and the Chamber grow, and I also work with the Norristown Small Business Assistance Center that is managed by Weiner University and Monica to really help businesses in the Norristown area really thrive. So this initiative came up as a result of just being in the right place at the right time. So several months ago, Kate and Angela, who are the owners of Reed Recycle Reed Repeat, was walking down the art walk and was talking about how can we get their business owners in the Norristown area? How can we get more people, especially county workers, to just know that we're here? And being in the right place at the right time, the former, I'm going to say this correctly, I hope we, Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley happened to be walking behind them as they were having this discussion as partners. And she said, "I hope you don't mind that I'm eavesdropping on your conversation, but I think I can help you," at the time. And so at the time while she was here, she said, "Let's set up a meeting and let's talk about what it looks like." Kate and Angela reached out to me and said, "Cassandra, come to the meeting, let's talk." So we got around a roundtable and talked about what could it look like to really be able to share the fullness of Norristown with the county workers here on, on Sweet Road. So several, from that meeting, several of your colleagues, and I think I've seen several of them here, if you just raise your hand, we've gotten to several meetings and we got on several Zooms to talk about how can Stay and Play come into existence? So Stay and Play, again, is a, is a partnership between the Norristown Small Business Assistance Center, the Chamber of Commerce, and Montgomery County. Am I advancing this? Or so?
No, she'll, she'll do it.
Okay. So Stay and Play is a program that we believe, if done correctly, we can definitely boost local businesses and give them more hope that we can have more visitors come to their store and create a nice vibrant community in Norristown. Norristown has a lot of great jewels and gems, and we want to be able to share all that Norristown has with everyone in the community. We believe that this program will help to revitalize the economic community in Norristown by just having more visitors come to the, come to the stores, walking through the streets of Norristown, and making sure that the businesses are strengthened and they are thriving in the downtown area of Norristown. Excuse me. We also believe that it's going to provide social opportunities for your, your colleagues to come out and visit stores and visit some of the businesses, and also receive some discounts to shop, eat, and spend time maybe in some of the gyms and the facilities in the various areas within the Norristown area. We believe that in strengthening the Norristown's economic vitality, that we're going to see things like increased tax revenue for the area, that more community development. We want to make sure that Norristown government knows that we're here, and we want to see more things happen and thrive in the Norristown area. So the way the program works, so the way that the program will work is that we want to make sure that the employees in the, here in the county are able to go on the county site to be able to figure out what's available in the Norristown area. And businesses that are in the Norristown area will reach out to the Chamber, as well as the Norristown Small Business Assistance Center, and say, "I'd like to be a part of the program." They'll simply determine what their discount is or their offering is, then they'll contact the Chamber and say, "I'd like to complete a form," and then they have to just make sure they're open for businesses. Now, the county workers will simply go on the county site, find out what businesses are participating, grab their employee ID, go on down to the stores that are available in the area, and explore, and receive those discounts. So we hope that this program will be a thriving program for the Norristown area, and we'll be able to see more of our county workers come out and enjoy what Norristown has to offer. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Again, I'm Cassandra Davis. I work with the Chamber and with the Small Business Assistance Center, and I'm here for any of your questions if you're interested in being a part of the program.
So how many businesses are, are part of the program?
So we're starting out small. We're trying to continue. Right now, we have five businesses enrolled, but we know that businesses are going to hear about it, and it's going to increase. So our goal was to start the program and then continue to go out and visit businesses to have them to be a part of the program.
So what are the five businesses?
The five businesses is Emiliano's, they are further down Main Street. And then there is El Jefe, who's under a little bit of construction right now, but they're coming back. I spoke with them this morning. Reed Recycle Repeat, the Crazy Arons, and the Zoo, right now, are the ones that are enrolled.
Great.
And then we have several that discounted us that wants to be involved too. So we, we expect to have this increase within the next couple of days.
And do you have the number of small businesses that currently are operating in Norristown?
Unfortunately, I do not have that number available.
That would be a helpful step.
We've been working for years to try to determine that number, so.
Okay.
Yes. More challenging, working with the Birkenheimer, whoever now is.
Sure.
Tri-Financial Group. Tri-Financial.
Thank you. So again, they've given us, we had interns who have been actually sitting through it, so we're really trying to figure out a better database to help us get that information.
There's quite a few.
Well, thank you for your leadership on bringing awareness to businesses in Montgomery County. One of the things that pains me, just as a resident of the Norristown area, is just, I want to see more economic development right here in Norristown. You think about us building this new justice center, how do we really invest in, you know, our, our main streets? And so I think it's starting with making sure that we know about the existing businesses and we give our county employees reason to stick around after, after work. So, so thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I was just going to say, I think it's a great idea, and I look forward to see it expand in the future. I mean, there, there are a lot of, you know, great businesses along Main Street and throughout Norristown or close to, you know, to our complex here that are definitely within walking distance. So it'd be great to see how, you know, get our county employees out to support their local businesses, because then it goes along the more, we can support the local businesses, leads us towards more revitalization that could actually continue to have, continue to happen in, in Norristown. And we just got to figure out which restaurant that Lee could put his credit card there, so when we go for lunch, it's automatic.
Keep it on tap, right?
Yeah, we just run a tab, and he'll just have to cover it. So we'll work through that too. So again, thank you for your leadership on this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And not just for lunch, but for drinks.
All right, all right.
And entertainment, and entertainment. We know we have to go to some of the theaters. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Spend a night, please.
This is what it looks like for our employees. And we'll be doing a communication out to all employees about it? Great. Awesome. Great. Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, next up, Monaco 2050 Comprehensive Plan Update with Scott France and Ann Levick Ruberger. Are you a part of the presentation?
No, I'm just a spectator.
You're just a spectator?
She's here for support.
Okay, there we go. Sometimes you need that.
Yes, and thank you for the Stay and Play program. My wife may ask why I start bringing books and craft beer home from work, but I don't think she'll complain, so it's a great program. I'm here to give you an update on the Monaco 2050 County Comprehensive Planning Effort. This plan will replace the, the current plan, which was adopted in 2015, known as Monaco 2040, a shared vision. And we really wanted to focus briefly today, let everyone know about the public outreach opportunities and our new advisory committee, who is helping shepherd us through this. And in fact, one of our, our co-chairs of the advisory committee, Dulce Flaherty, is with her, with us today to support us, and I'll introduce her again later. And coincidentally, I didn't know, but Kim Ramsey is also on our advisory committee, so thank you for being here. As a reminder, I wanted to start off, the purpose of a comprehensive plan, as everyone may know or may not know, it serves as a long-range vision for the county. It establishes policies, priorities, and guidelines to achieve the community's desired vision, including guidelines for growth and development and the preservation of natural resources. Through the plan, we can develop priorities for county operations, policy and financial investment, and guide municipalities and other local leaders in making decisions. It's a plan for the county, but it's also a plan for our partners and to bring everyone into a consistent vision. You can keep this slide up, but I did want to also mention that with this iteration of the plan, we're really thinking about change. The subheading of the plan is a comprehensive plan for a changing world. We've seen in the last few years how rapidly some of these changes are happening. With the new plan, we're looking at how we continue to grow, which is a, a good thing for the county, all the factors that influence that, but it's critically important to manage how we grow. And the best way to do that is to maintain our, our quality of life and opportunities for all. The ways people move around, where the goods that we purchase move around with freight and delivery, and also how businesses manage that is also a critical element of this plan. Changes in our demographics, how we serve and engage different communities as they grow and expand across the county, and the ever-increasing threats to our natural and historic resources that comes with both climate change and the growth that is in front of us. The plan will identify all of these issues and establish the goals and objectives for how we plan for the future and implement in the present. Go to the next slide. So I want to talk briefly about the new appointed body that will help us with this process, the Monaco 2050 Advisory Committee. And you go to the next slide, too. The advisory committee members come from a wide variety of professional backgrounds. County commissioners were instrumental in this process of choosing who would be on this committee. We have, what I will admit, is a very large committee, but I think that's to our benefit ultimately, as we have more voices and experiences to, to bring into the process. We have 42 members. We did our best to match the demographic makeup of the county, reflect that makeup in this committee. In terms of backgrounds, we have conservationists active with nonprofit and public entities. We have developers in the private sector who are active in the county and region, including some with affordable housing expertise and practice. Economic development professionals from chambers of commerce, like Kim, tourism bureaus, and local business groups. Engineers active with land development and stormwater management. Transportation professionals, both on the consultant and nonprofit advocacy side. And municipal managers and planning staff that really know what's happening at the ground level in communities. And also, we were sure to include some social, social service advocates who understand the challenges faced by our underrepresented, underrepresented communities and vulnerable members of our county. In total, as I said, we have 42 members. They're led by our esteemed co-chairs, Emma Hertz and Dulce Flaherty. Emma Hertz is the President and CEO of Health Spark Foundation, a private independent philanthropic foundation serving Montgomery County. Emma has spent over a decade leading systems change efforts to build a stronger social safety net with a focus on increasing access to safe, affordable, and dignified housing. Through experiences in government, philanthropy, and the nonprofit sector, Emma has developed practical skills in bringing sectors together to build more inclusive and equitable public policy. Dulce, who's with us today, is a resident of Marlborough Township. She retired as Vice President for Community Partnerships at Natural Lands after a 20-year career as the founding executive of the Montgomery County Lands Trust. She also, well, I could spend the next 10 minutes just going through her achievements and resume, but she's also a longstanding member of the Montgomery County Planning Commission Board, serving constantly since 1994, and is a Vice Chair for our Board since 2012. Among the many formal accolades she has received, she's also instrumental in creating the county's Green Futures Program alongside the ballot initiative that implemented 150 million toward open space conservation in the county. And thank you again, Dulce, for coming out today to support us. Next slide. Just a few comments on the role of the advisory committee. The members will provide feedback on the research that staff does and assist in identifying community concerns and sharing local knowledge about our communities. The advisory committee members will serve as liaisons between MCPC planners and the public, and will be a critical link to ensure that the planning process is transparent and open to all community members. They will vet the staff's work as the plan is drafted and make sure that it reaches a consensus of public and informed opinion, so as to give the county commissioners our best and most comprehensive work to guide the county and its partners in this effort. Next slide. So I want to talk about the public outreach and how everyone in this room, everyone listening, and everyone who lives and works in our county can have an opportunity to help shape this plan. Hopefully, many of you have already had an opportunity. We've been out this, since really the end of 2022 in one manner. We're kind of at the midpoint in shifting gears into the full visioning and plan development process. Just to get an overview, that as part of the public engagement process, issue identification, while was really from the start, continues to be an ongoing process. We've gathered a lot of input on the things and issues that residents care about, and we also have, currently have a set of 10 background and trends documents available on the Planning Commission website under Monaco 2050, open, available for the public to review, become informed, and also see where some of the, the thinking is headed. This feedback helps, served in helping us decide upon the key questions that need answers. What are the topics that residents care most about when it comes to housing, transportation, health, and more? How do these translate into policy solutions? What are the policy directions that the Planning Commission can further in this plan? And then these key questions will also help shape the visions and goals of Monaco 2050. This is what will be crafted with the input of the advisory committee, county staff, and with feedback from the public. The policy maps will be crafted in partnership with our 62 municipalities, in that our maps will reflect their planning priorities and will be generally consistent with each other. All of these elements will be, will be reflected in the draft plan. We've really had a, next slide, please. We've really had an extensive list of pop-up events and opportunities to get out and meet members of the public and get their feedback. This is just a sampling of some of those events. Recently added was the Bridgeport Night Out this week that Commissioner DeBello was at. And we'll continue to do those, and we accept all invitations. So let us know if you have an event or a gathering of people, or even a presentation to a, a certain community that you think would be beneficial. Let us know. We'll be happy to talk to you and see if we can find a, a way to visit with you. Next slide. We also conducted an extensive survey effort to collect feedback. The survey just recently closed, but it was open for over a year, and we had 889 responses. We tried to distribute it everywhere. We tried to distribute it everywhere we could and promote it, as well as having it online accessed and translated into a couple of different languages as well to get more feedback. As one, just a little teaser on one of the main questions asked, it was a pretty extensive survey, but when we looked at what the respondents said in terms of the importance they place on, on different issues, what rose to the, to the very top, although there were, there were lots of them, was preserving open space in natural areas, followed by addressing aging water and sewer infrastructure, work to prevent or mitigate flooding and other potential hazards, repairing local roads and bridges, and retaining the businesses already here. So a lot of focus on infrastructure there, as well as conservation and maintaining quality of life. Of course, there are many other issues too, and sometimes those issues go against each other. Next slide. Another way of facilitating feedback was a padlet that we had opened during this time as well. The padlet, if you think of it in terms of like a digital or online bulletin board, where people can post their thoughts, where others can respond to it. And one of the interesting aspects was the ability to upvote or downvote on a comment. So occasionally, you'd get, you'd get a little, a, a firestorm comment that would generate some response, and it was interesting to see, you know, a, a run of support to that statement, or maybe those who, who had a different opinion or disagreed. We had 181 posts or comments while that was up, and again, that was a useful starting point for, for getting people to talk. Moving forward, next slide. We're reshaping that ability into another, a newly created platform called Engage Monco. I'm gonna say the website several times, hopefully to, to drill it in, but engage.montgomerycountypa.gov. That's really the county website with Engage in front of it. This is a new site that we have worked as a third-party platform and put the Monco 2050 Plan on it. It's a way to collect information, to present information, to, we can run surveys and questions are up there now. The public can respond and comment on anything that's up there. They can even look at the, those existing trend reports which are posted and offer their, their feedback or thoughts as they look through those, as well as interactive mapping components will be introduced later as well. Next slide. The Engage Monco, engage.montgomerycountypa.gov website also is important in getting to the answers on those key questions or letting people chime in. Just a few examples, things like what policy options do you support to encourage broader housing options? What physical infrastructure helps to facilitate community in your area? What transportation modes are important to you? And how can vehicular and non-vehicular travel opportunities be coordinated together to create more options? What environmental or infrastructure hazards are impacting your home or property? So again, we encourage everyone to go on and keep coming on. It'll be updated frequently with new opportunities to provide input. Next slide. And then our other efforts that will continue or start, continuing will, will be, will still be out in the public at pop-up events. Again, any presentations invited to. In fact, the commissioners' meetings had such a successful away meeting, I guess you could call it, back in, in Limerick a couple of months ago, and I was out there, I saw how many people were out there, all the discussion. Everyone was engaged and talked about things. We want to be at the next away meetings in different municipalities and be out there, you know, an hour before, have a table, get to talk to everyone who shows up, and get more feedback that way, too. So we're working with the team here to facilitate that. We also have a consultant hired. Connect the Dots is a public outreach and engagement consultant located in Philadelphia. They specialize in getting feedback from those who are harder to reach, who have historically been underrepresented in our outreach and engagement work. Connect the Dots research so far shows some shortcoming in our responses from people of color, lower-income individuals, and youth. And we want to, they're gonna help us do some focus groups, reaching out to those communities, as well as targeting pop-ups as well, which should get to those populations. And then finally, we're working with some of the early advisory committee's comments already, who noted a need to be more focused and, and create meetings or topics with, with existing businesses and their workforce, with the disability community, and the LGBTQ+ community as well. So that, they will be helping us set those up in 2025 as well. Next slide, or your, this is good. So this is just my final information slide, broad overview of the timeline. We're pretty much right in the middle there. The early stages were background data analysis, research, mapping, and the initial public outreach that I went over, as well as the website. Now we have the advisory committee up. They've had two meetings so far, and will continue through the next 16 to 18 months. And we'll continue the public outreach as I talked about while we draft the policy plan and maps next year. The whole plan is to have a Monco 2050 Plan adopted in early 2026. Of course, the draft will be out before then, and that also will be a, a heavy opportunity for, for public comment before we get there. Next slide. And that is all I have. My, my parting message is really to everyone again, from commissioners to attendees in the room. Anytime you have the opportunity to mention Monco 2050, to encourage your colleagues, contacts, and networks to be a part of this process, the more people we have giving input, the better plan is gonna be and the more informed it will be. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott, for your leadership. Yep. So I actually got to meet some folks from your team that were out at an event in Sautterton, and there, there was a lot of good engagement. So good to see you out in the community and, and traveling. And I appreciate your patience as we thought through the 42 individuals that would sit on the team. I know that we took a little longer, but I think this administration really wants to be thoughtful in terms of who we put on advisory committees, boards, commissions, and all that good stuff. And I think being at the kickoff meeting, I think you assembled a really nice, nice group. So I look forward to seeing that body of work. So, and thank you for your leadership as well, agreeing to, to co-chair. Any questions or comments?
No, I was, I was just gonna say, I have to echo Commissioner Widener because I know that was a little drawn-out process to, what forming this, this team, but I think that the three of us really worked hard, working with you and your staff to assemble what I thought was an amazing group of individuals throughout Montgomery County, representing a lot of, a lot of different backgrounds, experiences, expertise. I mean, so I think that, I think a lot of, a lot of good things are gonna come out of it. And I just want to, you know, commend your group and Anne, because I, I grabbed Bridgeport again, because that was my first, you know, seeing you out there, what you're, what, what you're trying to achieve, and just the way she had, the way you had the board set up with, and put the little dots on the, you know, the different questions and all that, I think it was a great idea. And it's, you know, it's a good way to, you know, engage the community and that, you know. It looked like you had a lot of, when I looked over a few times, it looked like you had a good, you know, people coming over, providing input. So I think, I look forward to see the results of that as well. So again, thanks for what you're doing, and that, you know, 2026, huh? There's a lot going on in 2026.
We'll do it early, we'll get it out of the way.
Yeah, great job.
And that full advisory committee list I meant to say is available on the website. I, with 42 people, I didn't, I didn't name them all, but it's up there, and we invite people to, to check it out.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, no, I'll just say thanks, too, and it was great to see everybody at the kickoff and think big. You know, we're excited to, to get to work implementing some of this, so thanks.
Good, thank you. All right, next up, we have a 2024 Budget Update with Dean Dorcon, our Chief Financial.
The county commissioners. Next slide. So I'm gonna cover several different financial topics. This is more of a mid-year financial update for 2024, but there are a few things that have happened this year that I'd like to cover. The first is a review of our 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That was issued in June. It's actually posted up in the Controller's Office webpage. I would encourage, you know, the public to take a look at it. It's not just numbers, it has a lot of valuable information about the county, and it has all the historical reports included on that webpage. We're gonna take a look at revenue performance year-to-date through June 30, so first six months of this year. Same thing on the expenditure side. And then I'm gonna spend a few minutes on, on the 2024 capital budget and talk a little bit about that. In recent months, some questions had come up about the Planning Commission projects, so I'll review that at a high level and point, point people in the right direction to more detailed informations available. Next slide. So starting with the '22 Audited Financial Report, as I said, it was issued in June. You can see on an audit basis, compared to what the budget was for 2022, we outperformed revenues by 16.5 million, roughly 3.4%. Same thing on the expense side, we're roughly $15 million lower, that's 3%. I will note, though, that we implemented a new GASB standard, so there's a book entry that is on, not to bore you with the accounting details, but there's a book entry of about $8 million on the revenue side and the expense side that offset each other. However, we did still have, in certain areas, better revenue performance. There's some one-time revenue that was received in 2022 that was related to COVID insurance reimbursements, you know, several million of that. Investment income was a little bit better than expected. And also, which I'm gonna talk about later, the gaming revenue did, did pretty well in '22 compared to budget. On the expense side, we had a significant, a significantly higher level of savings, and that's because the county had experienced probably record-high vacancy rates in 2022. That has flattened out in '24, you know, great efforts by the whole organization and the Human Resource Department. You know, we're currently at, at a, at a much better level, but in that year, we did save a lot against the personnel budget. With those results, the ending fund balance unassigned finished at about 123.5 million. That's roughly 24.5% of the revenue. That's what we measure against, that's what our formal fund balance policy dictates, which is a fund balance goal range of 18 to 20%. So we finished above that. I will note, though, that our fund balance level at 24.5% is, is much lower than a typical AAA around the country, a AAA county. You would normally see a county, you know, of our size with large service levels probably in the 30 to 35% range. Next slide, please. So turning to 2024, you know, this time of year where we are, we, we know a lot about ourselves, right? We've got six months of actual data under our belt. We're in the midst of our budget process for 2025, so it's a good time, and at the same time, we're closing out 2023. We are under audit for 2023 and anticipate that those financial statements will be published in the months ahead. However, on an actual basis for the first six months, the county's collected about 359 million or 63% of the total general fund revenue budget. We've expended about 269 million, that's roughly 47% of the expenditure budget. We are experiencing some costs that are higher than what we would have anticipated, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we get further into the presentation. Next slide, please. So as you can see, the revenue that's been received for the first six months, and this is to be expected, right? Real estate tax revenue makes up half of the general fund budget. We've received 74%, our, I'm sorry, 74% of the revenue received for the first six months is from real estate taxes, and obviously the, the others to follow. Next slide, please. At this time of year, we're already through the discount and flat period by the time you get the, to the end of June. So we, we typically collect, you know, most of the real estate tax revenue, you know, by mid-year. As you can see, we took in 266 million. That's about 91% of the overall real estate tax budget. This is consistent with our historical collections. We have, we have a strong collection rate. Our tax collectors do a really good job. So this, this would be, you know, for, for me, this is to be expected, we should be in this range. Next slide, please. So, you know, real estate housing is extremely important to our budget in a number of ways, but one of the bigger ways is, is actually our real, our overall real estate tax assessment base. And we, we track this very closely. Our Board of Assessment Office provides monthly reportings of changes that are occurring, whether it's, you know, the addition of, of real estate or the deletion, or, you know, assessments being reduced. But just to, you know, sort of give you a snapshot of what's going on right now, last year, during the first seven months of the year, we were increasing by about 0.39%. And we finished the year a little over a half a percent in terms of overall increase in the assessment base. You can see this year, we're trending much lower at 0.11%. There are some reasons why. Obviously, there, there has been a slowdown in the residential and commercial development market. I think that the planning department, you know, can confirm that through some of the applications that, that they receive. So that, that's part of it. Some of it comes from larger assessment appeals on commercial properties, but this is one that we're gonna want to monitor and keep a close eye on because it's, it's one of the few areas that we get natural revenue growth from. A half a percent a year, you know, adds about, you know, a little over $2 million of new net tax or real estate tax revenue to the budget. So I'm hopeful that we'll see some better performance by year-end. The budget had assumed about a half a percent growth rate in the assessment base because that was typically what we've been trending, at least in the last five to six years. Next slide, please. So again, we, we follow the housing market. It's important, right? We recorded deeds office transactional fees that relate to home sales and refinancing of mortgages. It's important to us, and we, we use a pretty solid resource. Berkshire Hathaway has reporting that they provide to all the counties and publish themselves. So this is based on their data. But you can see, for the first six months of 2024, home sales were down 1%. The number of home sales in Montgomery County when you compare to the same time period in 2023. However, on the flip side, what's been happening is median price has been going up from year to year. You can see the average sale price for the same time period is up 9%. Number of homes for sale that are on the market, that's up 6%, and then pending home sales at 3%. Next slide. So looking historically at this, starting with the top line, right, number of properties sold, you can see the baseline, you know, back in 19 and 20, even with the pandemic, like, real estate sales slowed down, and then, you know, when things got back online, you know, it caught up a bit. And, you know, the mortgage rates were at record lows after that in '21, so we had a spike again, but the true baseline is probably, you know, when you look back to 19, you know, roughly 12,000, you know, properties sold. We're significantly under that in, in '22 and '23, and as I just mentioned, you know, when you take the six-month snapshot of '24 to '23, it's down 1%. There is some positive news to this, though. You know, there seems to be a trend right now, beginning in the summer months, that there's more inventory. We know that inflation, you know, is stabilizing now, so as economists are predicting, the feds, you know, are likely to, to reduce the, the short-term rates, and it could, it could be more than once. So that will positively impact these numbers going forward, and we'll continue to monitor it and report out to the board. Next slide. So as I said, you know, real estate tax collection is, these are some of the emerging revenue trends that we're seeing. Collections are, are definitely in line with what we would expect, but as I noted, the assessment growth is lagging behind what we would assume in the budget, so we'll pay close attention to that. Remember, appeals, residential property appeals, I think that deadlines office-first, so that'll all be happening over, those, those cases will be reviewed over the next several months, so there'll be some outcomes from that. Some may be appeals that are longer, but we'll have a better idea by the end of, end of the year where the overall assessment growth is gonna be. Investment income has been performing extremely well, better than what we would have expected. When we were developing the budget for this year, we were anticipating, just like others, that the feds would have reduced rates sooner than, than anticipated. So we're getting over 5% on our liquid funds, and the investment income will definitely outperform the budget by year-end, so we'll continue to monitor that. That helps us also on the capital side. You know, we had a very large bond issue at the end of last year, so we're earning, you know, over 5% on, on that money, and that can go directly towards capital project spending. Next slide, please. Some other trends, I mentioned the gaming, gaming revenue. You know, this, this is, you know... You know, this is, you know, our percentage that the county gets from the casino and then some of the online gaming that goes on, you know, around the county. That has continued to increase, and we're seeing the same trend again this year based on our Q1 and Q2 allocations. So we are projected to outperform the '24 budget if, you know, this pace continues, which is roughly about $4.5 million, that budget. That has grown over the past several years to that level. Departmental earnings overall are down, and, you know, I think that we're probably going to finish below budget. Primarily, this is related to fees that are collected in the Recorder Deeds Office. I just mentioned all the things that are going on in the housing market. So they're seeing a lower number, you know, filings for home sales and refinancing and thing like, things like that. If the interest rates go down, the market changes, then, you know, we'll see that change, we'll see that flip again, and hopefully, you know, that's what we'll see more in '25 and '26. Next slide, please. Just so overall, you know, I mentioned the spending was at about 47% of the overall budget. This is a snapshot of our major functional areas and what percentage they represent of the spending for the first six months. I'll just note that Health and Human Services combined makes up about 38% of the total expenses that you're looking at here for the first six months. Much of that is covered by grant funding on the revenue side, although the county does have, you know, different levels of matches to the funding that comes in through the state and federal government. Next slide, please. This is a snapshot of the actual expenses, right? So our major categories, you can see personnel is roughly 44%. Debt services about 13%. And, next slide, please. They represent around 58% of the total budget. So where we are right now for the first six months is to be expected. We have 26 pay periods. 50% of them are completed as of June 30. So we are, in the first six months, experiencing savings from, you know, attrition and vacant positions. However, there's various, you know, positions that are being added to our budget and, you know, things, some strong initiatives to fill positions. So we're going to have, you know, a different overall performance by the end of the year, but the positive thing is, is that we are saving against the budget, and we would have expected so. We actually built into the budget a negative appropriation of $8 million. So in our budget, there's $8 million. It's a negative expense that, you know, we have to save at least that against the budget. We paid down about $37 million or 56% of our debt service by June 30. That overall budget's about $66 million in the general fund. We also pay for the motor vehicle registration fee, capital projects, debt service out of that fund, so that's not combined with the general fund. We completed a new money bond issue in '23, which I mentioned, that was close to the end of the year. So the year-one debt services reflected in the '24 expense, roughly about $6.5 million. We do anticipate that a new money bond issue will be needed again, maybe by the end of the year or into 2025, to continue funding the capital plan that exists today. Next slide, please. So some of the emerging expenditure trends in 2024. On the favorable side, our annual contribution to the retirement fund is projected to be about $900,000 lower than the budget. This is a result of our actuarial valuation being completed this year, and that's reflective, you know, as of January 1st, 2024. When we budget, our actuary gives us a projection of what they think the contribution's going to be. So it was a little bit better when the actual report came out. So that's good news. Healthcare costs, and this is more, you know, the trend that, you know, all sectors are experiencing right now. Our healthcare costs are trending higher, you know, roughly about $1.8 million overall or 6% higher than the budget at this point. That's based on, you know, claims data, you know, through the end of May through June. That's primarily driven by higher utilization and medical inflationary cost increases. And as I said, we're not alone in this. Private sector, public sector are all experiencing this, particularly, you know, in the last two years, this has been recurring. There are some higher overtime costs in certain departments. They're offset by personnel vacancy savings, but as we still have a higher level of vacant positions, you know, whether it's in the correctional facility or the sheriff's department, we do have to fill in and overtime utilized for that. Our property and casualty insurance costs, which renewed mid-year, is trending higher. It's approximately $277,000 or 16% higher than what we had anticipated in the budget. The insurance market is a hard market that, as, you know, we're not the only ones experiencing this. So that was not anticipated coming into the new year. Next slide, please. So just, you know, looking towards the future a bit, you know, the '25 budget, you know, we do see expenditure and revenue pressures in certain areas of the budget. You know, I've been talking about the interest rates. I think that, you know, what, you know, might occur with reductions will help us in a number of the revenue areas. But then, you know, if rates go down, you know, our investment income will go down too, right? So we'll have a, we'll have a hole there. So it's pluses and minuses, you know, in that area. We also have to continue to monitor the federal and state budgets of the future. You know, a lot of our grant funding comes through, you know, the state, some's direct state, some's federal pass-through the state, and then, you know, we have some direct federal funding, too. So, you know, there is some uncertainty there, so we will continue to monitor that and get as much information as possible as we go into the '25 budget and develop the proposed budget for '25. There is energy market volatility that will be impacting our costs for electricity and fuel. We know of that, and, you know, we were prepared for that. In recent years, we've been able to procure electricity at, you know, very low rates, but that contract was a three-year contract that expired in '23, so we're at a different level now. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to turn to the capital budget, and I'll just say that the capital budget information is out on the county website in a lot of detail. We have a storybook that includes all the projects. You know, it's got great descriptions of what's going on, the funding sources, the expenses. So every individual project has a story that the public can go out and access and read for themselves. Overall, the '24 budget's roughly about $208 million planned just for 2024. We have a five-year plan that's updated during the budget process, so these numbers change each year. The board formally adopts a one-year budget, you know, and that would be, you know, the next year will be '25, but the five-year plan is approved as well. As you can see, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about this, the Planning Commission functional area and the projects that are included in that, that's roughly $63.3 million in total. It represents 30% of the overall capital budget for 2024. Next slide, please. Lot of detail here. Like I said, all this is out on the county website, each individual story. But just to show you at a high level, and I've highlighted a couple of these projects because, you know, when you hear Planning Commission, you wonder what projects are in there and, you know, how do they relate? You know, some of these, and it's a large number, you know, are transportation projects like ridge pipe improvements or our SEPTA capital share that's required that we have to make each year. So they're all included and embedded in here, but I'll talk a little bit more about what really drives this overall budget. But this gives you a good snapshot of the expense and then the funding sources for each of the project. As you can see, about 63% of it is funded by bond proceeds, but then another 46 is coming from federal grants and then seven from state grants. So we get other funding sources. We're pretty aggressive in going after, especially on some of these bigger projects, any federal or state grant funding that's available. Next slide, please. So as I said, the Planning Commission functional area represents about 30% of the overall projected '24 capital budget. And the major drivers are, you know, overall, all those ridge pipe road and bridge improvements total up to $37.5 million in the '24 budget. Roughly about $20 million is coming from federal and state grants. Next in line, you have the county-wide trail system improvement projects. They roll up to about $9 million. The Monaco 2040 Grant Program, you know, which, you know, we were just talking about earlier, that's roughly about $4.7 million. Open space and park expansion, $3.5 million. I talked about the county's capital contribution to SEPTA. That's about $1.5 million. And then the farmland preservation program's about $1.2 million. And, you know, as I said, we leverage state and federal funding where we can in a lot of these projects. So overall, you know, the county's funding in that category of, in that functional area, about $39.6 million or 68% of the total capital expense, and that's done with general obligation bond proceeds. Next slide. So I'm going to, I'm going to finish things up here just to give a quick update on our budget planning, which is ongoing. You know, throughout the year, we, you know, began the process early in May with departments preparing their operating budgets and capital budget requests. We've been meeting here in the summer months with each of the individual departments, going through proposals and getting ourselves prepared to frame out what will ultimately be the proposed 2025 budget that will be presented publicly for the first time on November 14 to the Board of Commissioners along with the five-year capital improvement program at the Board's regular meeting. That'll be followed by two public hearings, the dates to be determined, and then adoption of the budgets that are scheduled for December 9th at the last board meeting. Next slide.
That's it?
Hopefully, I beat Scott in time.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. We'll time you guys next time. Thank you for doing this. I think this is the first time we're just doing a mid-year public check-in, and I think it's important, from a transparency perspective, for us to give updates publicly. I know there's things that are on the website that residents can have access to, so thank you for putting together the presentation and trying to simplify it as best as you could.
Yeah.
And put it into layman's terms so people understand. So any comments or questions?
No, I mean, thanks for putting all this together. I think it's important, and I believe the plan is that we're going to do this quarterly moving forward, so I think that's, you know, really good. So that way, you won't exceed Scott in your presentation. But, and I, and thank you for pointing out the Planning Commission budget because I think it's important that was questioned in the past as far as why is their budget so high? And then when you actually see that what's actually going through or part of their budgets, you know, although it's Planning Commission, doesn't necessarily mean it's. So the Ridge Pipe Project, for example, I think that was 37 or a total like $37 million or something like that of the $63 million of that Planning Commission budget for 2024. And that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to be taking, I mean, there'd be another project like that in 2025 or so. So that number could fluctuate based on, you know, projects, and then part of that is, as you mentioned, money, it's federal and state money that actually comes in through grants and all that with these projects. So it's kind of confusing when you first see, you know, a high number of $63 million for a Planning Commission. Not that they're not worth it, but, you know, it is, you know, a little misleading, not misleading, but it's somewhat, you know, could be questionable, but we actually break it down and explain it. It makes sense, so, you know.
That's the Mr. Morgan slide.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't going to go there, but he has been asking, and, you know, I'm glad that we're, and others have asked, and I'm glad that we're able to take the time to present that information as well.
And I would, again, I would encourage, you know, the public and anyone else that's interested, you know, in our capital improvement program to go to our website and look at the storybook because it gives a lot more detail about each of the projects.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, public comment. And public comment, this section of public comment are on today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts, and it's limited to three minutes. This is everything that's on today's agenda.
Up first is David Morgan.
Mr. Morgan.
Good morning. I'm David Morgan from Ambler, and thanks for all these presentations today. Glad to hear more detail about the Planning Commission. Guess it's a big number, like $60 some million now we know, projects, we can see that. Then, I'm coming to you like as a taxpayer who seen 13% last year, and then before that, we had 5, 8, and 8%, so about 34% increase in taxes. And I'm seeing if the commissioners are looking for any savings they can find in capital projects, what we can do to make it easier for us who are facing high costs and everything in life, you know, groceries, et cetera. So my point is about today, number seven, contract award furniture, $3.7 million for the Justice Center. And this is a standalone project that's going on for years. I used to a lot compare with Bucks County, theirs was, I know you don't like to hear this, but their project was $86 million total, and our goal is to keep under $415 million. So it's, I'd like to see every meeting if there's any more input, how you're going after costs. We mentioned the state help, the federal help on these projects, that's great. But one flag that went off in my mind today is when we heard in the budget presentation by Mr. Dorton about a new new money bond project perhaps coming up. And so that was last year causing a future $12.8 million or so in debt service. We're going to have to pay these things off. And so I see is that you have a lot of money coming to the coffers here for the tax increases and the new money bond influx of about $125 million. So there's lots of money here, and I'd just see that maybe, looking forward, we can see a tax decrease. And this particular expenditure is an ongoing project, which, like, raises a little concern to me in the nature of these expenditures, because if you have a standalone project and it takes more and more money for it, what about farther parts of the county? Like, especially when it came up to the last meeting, I couldn't make it, but the emergency mental health center? If it's one place, I think maybe you might consider in a budget for voting on these things is to have maybe satellite places, like in education, we have modular classrooms. So you can have one building augmented, another place in the county, because anyone with a mental health problem from West Post Town area coming here, how to get here to the building, if it's in Norristown or wherever it is, that these might be a better use of our funds for lower amount for each project, and we can save on taxes as taxpayers. So thank you, Mr. DeBelvoir, for mentioning about the Justice Center being, looking out for the 4% over, cost overrun, that we're trying to keep that down and that everything be dry and mold-free if things are opened up, that before new furniture, as this is, matter of new furniture, everything is really in good shape and everything's moving along to save future costs. So, let's see. Oh, that's it. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Can I note?
Go ahead.
One thing about the, on the furniture, just for everyone's information, that staff spent a lot of time going through each and every piece of furniture that was recommended by both the architects and the designers and staff, which is part of the reason why it took quite a while to get to the agenda, and it ultimately came in several million dollars under budget.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd also like to mention one of the steps that this board took in the spirit of thinking through new ways to bring in revenue to the county to help offset taxpayer costs is we establish a new centralized grant, Office of Grant Management and Acquisition. And so that's a step that we took just recently to get ahead of finding new sources of revenue, whether it be through foundations, securing more grants. So that is a step that this board has taken. All right, who's next?
Up next on Zoom, we have Peg Patton.
Peg, can you hear us?
Hi. Sorry, I was muted. I live in Perkiel, New York. My comment is about the Park Caving Improvement Plan, Viv. And I just wanted to mention, I haven't prepared any remarks. I'm going to. And I just wanted to mention, I haven't prepared a many remarks, I'm gonna, but your, last time you met, you approved an award for a Kirkland mapping and flood study that's going to analyze flooding incidents. And I just wanted to mention that the use of asphalt in our parks and open spaces seems to be kind of arbitrarily decided. And I wondered how Montgomery County might incorporate the results of this analysis into more informed decision-making about applying impervious surfaces.
Okay. Thank you, Peg, for your comments.
That is all for public comment on the agenda.
Okay. All right, next up, approval of the minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 18th, 2024 meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mekesha, and a board comment. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, the authorization to apply for Pennsylvania DCED funding through the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. That was a mouthful. I'd like to invite Kaylee Silver to review this, this item.
Good morning, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Kaylee Silver. I oversee the Montgomery County Office of Housing and Community Development within the county's Department of Health and Human Services. I'm here today to discuss a request for resolution which would authorize my office to submit a Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, or CDPGDR, application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Next slide, please. So to level set, this program called CDPGDR is the last line of funding from HUD and it was awarded to the state through PADCD to help with ongoing recovery need for low and moderate income neighborhoods and residents due to Hurricane Ida. As an unfortunate reminder, Hurricane Ida was one of the most significant severe weather events to strike the U.S. in 2021. Estimates vary greatly, but the cost for the statewide damage was between $2 billion and $5 billion attributable to Hurricane Ida. You see here a map on the screen from our Department of Public Safety of the impacts of Hurricane Ida in 2021. Next slide, please. So in order to apply for the funds that the state received for ongoing disaster recovery needs, we have notified the public that we do intend to apply. We are in a 30-day public comment period now where we've received a lot of letters of support and we've held two public hearings, all in support of us applying for this funding for ongoing recovery needs due to Hurricane Ida. As a reminder, though, it does fall within HUD's CDPG program, which must primarily benefit low and moderate income residents and neighborhoods as well as to meet urgent needs and increase resiliency to lessen the impact of future disasters. We will, we plan to apply by next Friday, which is the deadline, for a total amount of funding of at least 14.6 million across four project categories. These four project categories are sort of set forth by PADCD and approved by HUD. Those categories are housing in the form of housing rehabilitation, buyouts and/or multifamily new construction, infrastructure needs, mitigation needs, and an allowable 1% program administration should we be awarded those funds in order to help deliver them. Next slide, please. Again, as a reminder, at least 70% of any awards that we receive from the state must benefit low and moderate income residents, either by an area benefit or direct benefit. You see here on the slide what we hope to apply for under the Montgomery County Budget Screen. Again, you'll see those categories I mentioned earlier, housing rehab. We do hope to apply and are very excited about that to actually supplement our very successful whole home repairs program and reopen that for households who, and homeowners who still have ongoing repair needs due to Hurricane Ida, should we be awarded. And then we are working with all of our municipalities around their needs for the other project categories, any continued housing buyout needs as well as multifamily new construction needs in local municipalities. We would need developers and municipality support for any projects that we're able to implement there. Infrastructure needs in local towns, we're working with Bridgeport and other municipalities around Montgomery County for various bridges and streets that are, were impacted and still need some support and help. Ongoing mitigation needs to help mitigate the effects of future disasters that may happen. And as I mentioned, the administration. So with your, next slide, please, with your approval and resolution today, we will plan to submit by next Friday. The public is still welcome to submit any other comments on this application. And you see my information up there. So thank you for the consideration and happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number One, as described by Ms. Kaylee Silver. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And you can stay there. You'll describe the authorization to submit an emergency solutions grant application for emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, and administration.
Thank you. This is another required resolution to receive from the commissioners in order for us to submit, again, to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, or PADCD. Unlike the previous one that I just presented on, which is a one-time opportunity due to Hurricane Ida, this is a grant we do apply for every year for the Emergency Solutions Grant to help us grow the impact of our homeless services support through Your Way Home. Next slide, please. As a quick overview of the Emergency Solutions Grant, or ESG, program, it provides funding for essentially homeless services, rapid rehousing, emergency shelter operations being our two priorities. Of note, Montgomery County, through our office within the Department of Health and Human Services, we do receive a direct entitlement of ESG. These funds come from HUD. Our yearly allocation and entitlement amount for 2024 was $288,458. But we, that's just not enough, right? We want to grow the impact. So we, with your approval, required approval, we applied to DCD for their entitlement from HUD. They, their allocation is more substantial, 5.9 million, but it is across the state. Next slide, please. So we are planning to apply by the deadline on August 30th. Of note, the state does first prioritize the PA counties that are not direct entitlements. And then whatever is left over is a competitive grant competition that we apply for. Last year, we were so grateful to receive from the state $300,000. However, we do apply for more than that because we have more need than that. Next slide, please, which will show what we hope to apply for. So we are applying for $550,000, the allowable 3.75% administration in that, bulk of it to help with our emergency shelter operations for various 24/7 emergency shelters. Stratoc County primarily our two salvation armies, which serve families experiencing homelessness, as well as some hoteling programs for, for single adults as well. And then our, to support our rapid rehousing programs, which we contract with various nonprofit providers to be able to provide short and medium-term rental assistance to rehouse people experiencing homelessness into their own apartments and own housing. So we plan to apply for a total of $550,000. Next slide, please. And with your resolution, we will put forth that, and thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Two, as described by Ms. Kaylee Silver. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Hearing none, moving on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, authorization of planning assistance contract for Hatfield Borough. Welcome Mr. Scott France back to the podium.
I'll be super quick.
Thank you.
We have a new three-year community planning assistance contract for Hatfield Borough in front of you with a resolution to approve that contract. This is our program that provides planning assistance, planning services to municipalities, which currently have 34 contracts and four regional contracts. Typically, we're bringing these to you for renewal or updating at the beginning and end of the year as they tend to end or start. This is unique in the middle of the year because it's for the best of reasons. It's a new community who wants to join the program and initiate a new local comprehensive plan, which is why Hatfield Borough came to us. Their last comprehensive plan was in 1994. So definitely it's a, a good time to reassess and do a new plan for them. We're looking forward to that work. The details of the contract, it will initiate in September 1st, 2024, run three years through August 31st, 2027. The total cost of the contract is $68,220. Through the CPA program, we subsidize 50%. The municipal share of that is $34,110. And that's a resolution before you.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Three, as described by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comments? Hearing none, moving on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, authorization to transfer a Chester Valley Trail, Trailhead parcel from Stone Brook at Upper Marion to Montgomery County. Bill Hartman. Thank you.
Good morning. So this morning, Planning Commission staff is requesting your acceptance of a Chester Valley Trail Trailhead parcel in Upper Marion Township by means of a related deed of dedication. As you may know, Toll Brothers is currently constructing a new residential subdivision known as Stone Brook at Upper Marion. It consists of 200-plus townhouses and single-family dwellings. It's located between US Route 202 and Ross Road in Upper Marion Township. And to direct your attention to the slide on the screen, the star inside the blue circle is the approximate location of Stone Brook as it relates to the county and the county trail system. Next slide, please. And then zooming in here, inside the red circle, there is the Stone Brook at Upper Marion Development. You can see the bear earth where the project is being built. At the top of that circle, you can see Ross Road. At the bottom of the circle, you can see US Route 202. And just to orient you further, you can see Bridgeport off to the right, upper right. And then on the other side of the river, of course, is Norristown. Next slide, please. Toll Brothers constructed a new roadway known as Prince Frederick Boulevard off of US Route 202 to provide primary access to the development. As Prince Frederick Boulevard winds north from US 202, the Chester Valley Trail crosses the roadway. Following its construction, Prince Frederick Boulevard was dedicated to Upper Marion Township as public right-of-way. And directing your attention to this slide, you can see US Route 202 at the bottom of the slide, the multi-lane roadway. And then Prince Frederick Boulevard leaves US Route 202 just to the, the right of that blue polygon. And then you can see it winds its way north and then hangs a sharp left at that red polygon and then winds its way into the primary part of the Stone Brook development. You can see the Chester Valley Trail is depicted with that yellow dash line that runs south and north in this slide. And you can see where it crosses Prince Frederick Boulevard just to the right of that, that red polygon. In June of 2018, the Montgomery County Transportation Authority acquired an approximately 0.57 acre parcel that abuts Route 202, known as the Tuuk property, for future use as a trailhead for the Chester Valley Trail. And the Tuuk parcel is that blue polygon that you can see in the middle right-hand side of the slide. However, it was later determined that Toll Brothers needed this parcel to develop Prince Frederick Boulevard. And therefore, the Transportation Authority deeded this parcel to Upper Marion Township to serve as public right-of-way. And Toll Brother has been using it for pedestrian vehicular access during construction of the Stone Brook development. In exchange for use of the Tuuk property, Toll Brothers build a trailhead at its own expense on a similarly sized parcel just to the north, on the opposite side of the Chester Valley Trail, with the understanding that the trailhead parcel would eventually be deeded to Montgomery County. This trailhead parcel now contains 24 parking spaces, which improve community access to the Chester Valley Trail. And so you can see that parcel where the trailhead was built is that red polygon right next to the Chester Valley Trail. Next slide, please. And then zooming in to that red parcel, you can see those 24 parking spaces. You can see how this trailhead sits immediately adjacent to the Chester Valley Trail. And there's a small path that connects the parking lot over to the actual trail itself. Ivana Montgomery has received and reviewed the deed of dedication to transfer the trailhead parcel from Stone Brook at Upper Marion Community Association, Inc. to Montgomery County. Going forward, the county's Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites Division will maintain the trailhead following transfer to the county. Therefore, today, we're requesting your acceptance of the Chester Valley Trail Trailhead parcel through the approval and execution of the related deed of dedication.
Thank you. I'd like to make, to approve Resolution Number Four, as described by Mr. Bill Hartman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comments? Moving on to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, authorization of a Tefra approval for Tower Health. Stephen Forster, our Director of Commerce.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. Stephen Forster, Commerce Department Director. Before you today is a request by Tower Health, a not-for-profit corporation, for a resolution approving the issuance of a series of tax-exempt revenue bonds totaling $1,522,500 to fund various capital improvements, including the design, construction, installation, and furnishing of facilities and equipment acquisition for hospitals in Pottstown, Reading, and Phoenixville. The bond series is to be issued by the Berks County Municipal Authority and has been approved by that authority pursuant to a Tefra hearing and resolution dated June 25th, 2024. The hearing was also properly advertised in the Times Herald here in Montgomery County. Because up to $20 million of the funds are to be used in Montgomery County at the Pottstown Hospital, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, or Tefra, requires the approval by the highest elected official in each county where the funds are to be used. Approval of this bond will benefit the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Montgomery County by improving service levels of Pottstown Hospital and is anticipated to improve the fiscal strength of Tower Health system overall. Neither the General Credit nor Taxing Authority of Montgomery County are pledged to security for these bonds. Thus, the county takes no financial risk nor obligation in this transaction, and it does not impact the county's balance sheet in any way. I therefore request the approval of the resolution as presented by our solicitor, Ms. Maureen Calder, approving the issuance of the bonds. We have our solicitor, Ms. Calder, here present to answer any questions that you may have about the legal impact to the county. We also have Dr. Rich McLaughlin, the CEO of Tower Health, Mr. Rob Anger, the CFO of Tower Health, and Mr. Peter Edelman of Stevens and Lee Bond Counsel for Tower Health, available to answer questions as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I'd like to make a, a motion to approve Resolution Number Five, as described by Mr. Steve Forster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comment or questions? Hearing none, moving to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, next up, personnel. I'd like to invite Catherine Halen, our Chief Community Resources Officer, to review the personnel list.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated August 14th, 2024, with a timestamp of 10:55 a.m. These transactions have been reviewed by management and are now presented for your consideration.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the August 15th, 2024 personnel presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Moving on to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
Can we separate 14, 31, 32, and 33?
14, 31, 32, and 33.
They say 13 and 14.
14, 31, 32, and 33.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B minus 14, 31, 32, and 33. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B, well, Montgomery County, Item 14, 31, 32, and 33.
Can we do those? Well.
How do you want to do them?
Could do them individually.
Why do we need to do them individually?
Because I'm gonna have different questions based on those. Because I'm going to have different questions based on those.
Can you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mckeisha. Any board comment? You have questions?
Well, so I'll start with number 14, voter services, ballot harvesting van that we want to purchase for $145,000. Again, we have no processes, procedures, no, nothing in place. We're going out, we're buying a van. Still don't really understand what the purpose of it is. I think that we're putting the van before the horse in this instance. I think that we should be sitting down and, because I have a lot of concerns about if we move forward with this, what is it going to do? How's it going to be? The policies? What's the oversight? You know, all of those things need to be figured out and determined and laid out. And then I think we would move forward figuring out what would be the appropriate, if anything, vehicle to purchase. So I don't, I don't understand why we're moving forward with this. It's a large expenditure item for something, quite honestly, I feel we don't need. Number 31, I'm not, I'm not sure what the module furniture is being used for it for voter services. It just says, is this, I guess that's a simple question. Where is this furniture going?
In the voter services office.
Downstairs?
Yep, in the sixth floor.
Okay, that's a simple one. So I'm fine with that. 32, we're purchasing, again, we're talking about, is this provides for 10 ballot drop boxes? Is this to replace drop boxes that we currently have? Are we adding 10 drop boxes? I'm not really sure what we're voting on here. So, again, it's kind of open, or is it, you know, we're going to buy 10 drop boxes and figure out what we want to do with them? So, again, I don't know what the purpose of that is. So could, do we know what, why we're buying 10, where they're going, what we're doing with them?
Buying 10 today or authorizing the purchase of up to 10 boxes will give the board the flexibility to install additional drop boxes. This is not a vote to install those drop boxes. The Board of Elections will need to approve the locations for any additional placements.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like, it's funny, because I was at the C cap conference last week and talked with counties from around Pennsylvania. A lot of them are doing away with drop boxes. There's, it's an expense that we don't need. And when we, I guess we could talk further about it, voter services. But when I, when I came, got sworn in and started attending meetings, one of the places I visit was voter services. And one of the things I found out was that our request for mail-in ballots is actually going down, and we're only seeing about 20% of mail-in ballots returned or being returned through drop boxes. So I'm not really sure. And again, it's just an additional expense that we're adding on to the county that we don't need. And then 33, we're talking about, are these the $90,000 just for replacing voting machines? Or what is this, the equipment that we're talking about?
The majority of that $90,000 is actually in the 15-ballot marking device carts. That's not, not the voting machines, but if people can picture their voting locations, these are actually the black carts that house the ADA-accessible voting devices. These get damaged and transport to and from polling places over time. So this is buying 15 replacement carts. And the printers is a combination of replacing printers, particularly in our satellite offices, and authorizing the purchase of up to 10 if the board chooses to create additional satellite offices.
Yeah, another expense that we don't necessarily need with satellite offices, but that's not what we're actually talking about. So, okay.
Do you have comments?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just respond to some of this. You know, as COO stated, these are budgetary authorizations. We expect the Director of Elections to come before the board for authorization of any additional satellite offices or drop boxes. We actually had 40% of ballots returned through drop boxes, I believe, in the primaries.
That was a, let's, come on, let's, that was a one-off because of the screw-up with the printers this year. Let's have fudge numbers.
Let's let him finish his comments.
And it was incredibly important. And many people commented that they felt more secure submitting their ballot through a drop box than sending it in the mail when you don't know how long USPS is going to take to get the ballot back to voter services. So the advantage of a drop box is that you're giving it directly to the county. They're picked up by our sheriffs. They're monitored 24/7 with cameras. They're really the most secure way, I would say, other than walking into voter services and dropping off your ballot or voting on Election Day, because you, you cut out the middleman of the USPS, which is helpful. And USPS, we work with them. They do a great job. They do sweeps the day of the election to make sure that they're picking up every ballot. But if you want to make sure that we have your ballot right away by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day, which is what the statute requires, a drop box is a great way to do that. So I'm glad the voter services is considering ways to make sure that that's even more accessible in the county. And there are certainly counties across Pennsylvania that are going in one direction, adding more, and then there are others that don't even want mail-in voting, right? So in Monco, we've had a clear policy of making voting as accessible as possible, and all of this fits that.
And I'll just say, for me, supporting this, it is about accessibility. And we want to make sure that with, what, 87 or 86 days to go, and, you know, we only have a set number of board meetings, that we make sure that our voter services team has the tools that they need in order to get out in front of everything that we need to do as, as a county to deliver on our promise related to the elections. And so I'm really excited to see the mobile effort. I know that we do have a team working on procedures and process, right, so that we can execute it well. We'll learn some lessons, like any new initiative. But the thought of being able to go to nursing homes, or the thought of being able to go to college campuses, and a wide range of community events, I think it's the right thing for us to do. So, so with that, I'll move, well, did I already, I already did the motion. So we'll move to a roll call vote. Commissioner Mckeisha?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBello?
No.
No? And for myself, aye. Motion carries. All right. Next up, motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Hearing none. Moving on, onto a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Mckeisha?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next up, general public comments. Limit to three minutes.
Yes. First up, we have Jim Malick.
Jim Malick, WarSester. I just heard your comments about you guys like accessibility for voter...
We do. Yeah, I do.
But it comes at a cost. The cost is integrity of the voting system. And I expected you guys to discuss the news about Montgomery County regarding voter integrity.
Well, we do have an election board meeting after this.
I get, I get that.
Happy to discuss.
I, I get that. I get that. DOJ just came out with a statement that reads, "Montgomery County Man Charged With Election Fraud Offenses." Okay? Registered here, registered in Philly, registered in Florida. I'm sure he's got a lot of accessibility here, Florida, Philadelphia, and the DOJ, and got him, and the Attorney General. So there is fraud, just seeing how there is, seems apparent that there may be fraud in Montgomery County when it comes to the voting system. Okay? My question is, what safeguards, how come the safeguards didn't work on this individual? That's what I wanted. Guy lives in Huntington Valley. All your safeguards, you said we have safeguards in place? How come they didn't work? I'll talk more about that at the election board. At the last board meeting, there was a lot of concern about non-citizen voting in this boardroom. And Mr. Mckeisha stated that when you register to vote, you not only have to declare your citizenship, but the state itself has your social security and driver's license, and they run the database and check. That's what you said. So I called the state to find out what the story is. They tell me you're incorrect, that you're providing inaccurate information, that everything flows through the county election board. Meaning, you have to verify citizenship. You got to verify all this stuff. Not the state, Montgomery County, and the election board. So my question will be to you at the election board, is what are you doing to verify citizenship? You gave us the impression that the state did it. The state told me that that does not happen.
I haven't answered your questions. Do you have any more?
You have 30 seconds.
No, go ahead.
Okay, good. So look, there was a resident of Montgomery County who was charged by the DOJ, which is proof that our safeguards do work, in the sense that it was caught. And honestly, the one place this person seems to have voted legally, and we don't have all the facts yet, is in Montgomery County. So he's a resident of Montgomery County entitled to vote in Montgomery County. The issue was, is how did he vote in the other jurisdictions? And in Montgomery County, we do something called a HAVA check. It's Help America Vote Act is a federal piece of legislation, and part of our standard for the check, which you're talking about, and maybe I said databases, I didn't say the state does it, we actually do the check in Montgomery County, is a verification of the social security number and the birthdate, and making sure that the person, the data lines up with what they submitted on the registration form. He submitted the correct information for Montgomery County, from what I understand, and was registered here appropriately, lived here, was entitled to vote here. And in Philadelphia, that was not the case. So I'm, it's unclear to me why they either allowed a registration or, or whether or not he voted. I don't have the information. But here in Montgomery County, what I can tell you is that he passed the HAVA check and was entitled to vote, and was a voter here for decades. So that's a check that we do on everyone. And if someone does not pass the check, we mark them as pending, or ID is not verified, is what we say. And there are hundreds of people who don't vote every single election because they don't pass the check. So we do not allow that group of voters, that group of people to vote if they don't pass the check. So we take that safeguard. And so there was not voter fraud in this instance in Montgomery County.
I guess my point to you is that you had a voter in Montgomery County.
Who, a resident of Montgomery County who voted elsewhere.
I get it. But you didn't know that. You did not know that he registered in Philadelphia. You did not know that he registered in Florida. You did not know that he voted here and there. And it goes to my next point, which I'll bring up at the board meeting, is that's no different than somebody who moves out of state and you don't know. They move out of state, maybe they vote in New York. But you have no way of knowing. There's the problem. So I'll talk to you more about it.
The DOJ obviously found out, right?
So let's, let's move on to the next public comment. Who's, who's next?
Up next is Michelle Mellor.
Hi, Michelle Mellor, Ripon Township. First, I want to say thank you for passing that program with the feminine products for the young girls. I have a family member in Norristown School District who's been buying feminine products for young girls for many years. So that's much appreciated. It'll be less they have to pay, you know, along with other hygiene products, products that they've been buying for both male and females. So anyway, with that being said, thank you for that. I came here last time. I haven't been here in a little bit. Life's been active, looked at funerals, this, that. Anyway, about the human trafficking in the area, along with all the births, you know, in Einstein Hospital by these young girls who have been clearly trafficked, and they were going in with their pimps and being taken out. And we had spoke briefly about that, and you were going to have an outreach with Laurel House. Well, after thinking about it, I was like, these girls aren't going to end up in Laurel House. You know, they, they're giving birth to these babies. They're barely like off the labor and delivery, and their, and their pimps are ripping them out of the hospital. Now, while I do want to say that that has been down, I don't believe it's because of anything good. I just, with a more recent one, the John was so violent, the police were called.
So I just have to interrupt you. Is this related to county business?
Well, the human trafficking in county, and yeah. These girls have now gone underground, you know. I mean, they all live in, it's Norristown, you know. It's, it's so, I, like, again, last time I was here, like, I don't know if this is county, like, it should be county business because it's happening in the county. So there've been less, but because I believe they're afraid now, and so they're not even taking them to the hospitals. What are we doing to try to track these women that are here, you know, illegally, basically, or undocumented? Yeah, undocumented, and being trafficked and being exploited? And like, I, like, I'm still sick to my stomach, like, where are these babies ending up? Like, it's just, it's just awful. So I just wanted to bring that awareness again and put that on the table to see what we can do about it, because it's not going away, and it's, it's just going deeper and darker. And so with that being said, something Tom brought up earlier, this is a completely different, I wasn't even planning on saying this today, I was just going to talk about that. But in regards to that poor veteran that just took his life yesterday, that's awful. It's awful. I have a father who was Vietnam, and these poor guys, I feel like a big part of the reason they have problems is because they don't feel appreciated or accepted. And that was a big problem with, my dad returned from Vietnam, you know, completely PTSD, subsequently died years later from Agent Orange. But they don't feel appreciated. So with the rest of my time, I'm going to request that we turn November into Veteran Month, not just one day. These poor guys need to feel way more appreciated than they are. And I am putting forward the motion that we turn November into Veterans Month. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I just want to comment on that aspect. Well, the human trafficking is a large problem, and it's very complex. But believe it or not, Veterans Month is all of November. And I think something that I was very, that I've talked about before and all that, that I, that I'm going to be pushing for, is that we put as much emphasis on the entire month for veterans.
Thank you.
Like we do on some of these other month-long celebrations.
For sure.
But yes, veteran, because I was, I never knew this, and we went, met with Veteran Services also a few months ago. And we were talking about, and I said, you know, we have Veterans Day, and it's only one day. And it's, to me, it's frustrating, because that group of individuals deserve much more recognition than, than we do, that we show. And I was pleasantly surprised to find out that November is actually classified as Veterans Month.
And yet, none of us know that.
But nobody really knows that, because we celebrate it for one day, but we take a whole other month to celebrate other things. And I think that hopefully this year will be the start of, in Montgomery County, that we put that same or more emphasis on veterans in November that we do for some of these other markets.
Here, here. Thank you.
Up next is David Morgan.
David Morgan from Ambler. And I'm coming to you as a person concerned about good life outcomes. I heard first in Mr. France's presentation about the 2040 Plan about Mako mamas, which encourages black outcomes to be verified at birth. And so I've been following that and look forward to a presentation in the future from them. The comment that I saw in the July 28, about reproductive rights is concerning to me, because I've known someone who was born, parents were pressured to abort, but they succumbed, they didn't succumb to the pressure, and the person's now a wonderful teacher and mother. And this is, people I know who have been in a situation they might not have been here because of abortion. So they're great blessings to me in my life. And so I want to just say positively, good outcomes is Mako mamas. And so I want to just say positively, good outcomes is Monaco Mamas, the county program. Another one is that there are federal qualified health centers, which are offering lots of services to women, there are lots of them, and they aren't mentioned, that I hear, in county meetings or other places. They could be on the website promoted, FQHC, Federal Qualified Health Clinics, federal. Another one is Pregnancy Resource Centers. I've visited some of them, and they're just wonderful, that they offer positive life outcomes for these babies and mothers and fathers, hopefully. And also the adoption efforts. I think November's National Adoption Month as well. And so as that can be, you know, county courts promote it, and we have these positives. There's an awful lot of talk about losing life, and we might be losing about 2,500 lives a day nationally through abortion. So I just am concerned in my heart for it. I know if you look at the Planned Parenthood situation I mentioned last time, it's an inverse situation, we have about 97% of the outcomes are for abortion. Adoption referrals, in their annual report, what they tell us, we're only 1721. Miscarriage, 3,00604. Prenatal service, 6,316, but abortion is 392,715, about 97%. So when you hear Planned Parenthood, I'm not seeing for our tax money of 700 million going to them each year, Parenthood. I'm seeing mostly not Parenthood. So they also get 754 million in private money. So I'd like to have the Monaco Mama program be one we can be revved up about, use a phrase in paper, we can be revved up about dying, and we can be revved up about FQHCs as a great health resource, rather than the more negative ones than in the paper. And I hope that you really take it to heart, because heartbeat is like a music, there's a beat going on. And two to one, going to one, is not good for life.
Up next is Megan. Sorry. Up next is Megan Curry.
Is Megan here?
Nope. Okay. Then it is, I'm very sorry about this, Rocco.
Rosio.
Rosio.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm here on behalf of an organization called Unides Para Servir, and also representing the Latino Business Coalition, also from Norristown, that has about 65 small Latino businesses and 35 new entrepreneurs. We are helping them by providing with information and how to get a starting in legalizing their new businesses, and comply with all the requirements that they need. Our goal is to help them elevate their businesses and have access to programs that will help them grow and have a better stability and visibility. I'm here respectfully to invite all of you to the biggest Latino festival in the Montgomery County area. And it will be an honor for our organization to have you in their third Mexican Festival and Central America Independence Day, happening on September 14, here in the heart of Montgomery Like I said before, it's the biggest here in the county. We are expecting about 2,000 to 5,000 people to come here, and it would be an honor if you could come and join us for the day. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Peg Patton on Zoom.
Hi, Peg Patton again, I'm in McDeal, Newville. My comments are about Green Lane Park. There are 34 disc golf baskets installed across about a 30-acre parcel of county property in Green Lane Park.
Megan.
According to Eppa David, signed by the former county solicitor, Montgomery County has no information on how they got there. The baskets, which are regulation equipment for professional disc golf tournaments, are not Montgomery County property. There's no record showing that the county paid for the baskets or received them as a donation. There's no record showing that the owner of the baskets was given permission to install them on county property. The plan to convert 30 acres of public open space in Green Lane Park into a venue for professional disc golf tournaments is not described in any Montgomery County document. It was never presented to the public, and it was never approved by the county commissioners. Because it was privately funded, there was no public discussion about what that conversion would cost. And even more important, there was no discussion about its opportunity cost. A professional disc golf course is not a shared use. In allocating 30 acres of our park for the exclusive use of disc golfers, the Parks Administration is denying access to that parkland to the rest of us, the overwhelming majority who don't play disc golf. Monaco's Return on Environment Report tells us that 30 acres of open space provide health and recreation benefits worth $488,000 per year. That means in the three and a half years since the disc golf course opened, $1.6 million in benefits have been denied to all but about 700 Monaco residents. I think the reason the disc golf course was never discussed publicly is that nobody could justify that ridiculous inequity. It's time for Monaco to ask the disc golf basket's owner to remove them and to repurpose those 30 acres for a more inclusive use. Thanks so much for your time. I'm going to get my phone, it's ringing. Thanks very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Do we know, do we know what she's referring to?
No.
Do you know what she's referring to?
A disc golf course that is in Green Lane Park.
Was it approved, or?
Yeah, this is a longstanding topic Ms. Patton has received, sought and received a lot of information about.
Yeah, when you get chatting, you know, if you want to do an update at some point, I don't know what it is.
Up next is Peg, oh no, I'm sorry, Adrian Seltzer, also on Zoom.
Adrian.
Hi, Adrian Seltzer, Lower Marion. I wanted to speak to a couple of the comments about, one, Planned Parenthood versus Monaco Mamas. It's really nice people have choices, and people should be able to make their own choices. And by the way, abortions are not funded by, in Planned Parenthood, are not funded by any federal, state, or local government monies. To the issues of voting and voter fraud, I am a judge of elections in Montgomery County. I have been working the polls for 35 years or so, and the concerns that people bring up are not necessarily valid concerns. Accessibility does not equal fraud. And I think it is important that everyone has their vote so they can have their voice. More drop boxes would be very nice, not everybody owns a car, not everybody is, is, is able to get to the drop boxes. The mail has been notoriously, notoriously late, and not been, you are not able to count on it. We now do not mail our taxes into the township, which is less than a mile away from us. I walk over and I drop them off, because we can't be assured that they will get there in time. And there's, there's no, just like with voting, there's no second chances. If you don't get it in time, then you get the penalties. I think more drop boxes are good, I think more satellite offices are wonderful, because Montgomery County is a huge county, and it takes, it takes me a half hour to just get to Norristown. And I'm sure it takes at least as that long for people in Green Lane to get to Norristown. It takes me a half hour just to get to Jenkentown. Having more access means more people will participate, which means you will know, makes the outcome more.
Thanks, Adrian.
I'm trying to think of the word. Is my time up?
It is.
It just makes it more voice of the majority. So, all right, that's it.
Thank you. Next up?
Last on Zoom is Jamie Vogel.
Jamie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, I had planned to speak at the next meeting, particularly the Board of Elections, but given that it was brought up specifically by Commissioner DeBello, separating out the voters, oh, I should say Jamie Vogel, Lower Marion, first, but because those voter services items were brought up by Commissioner DeBello, I just wanted to say first, you know, thank you to him for asking specifically about the items, you know, we as the public do want to know how the money is being spent, you know, and I look forward to hearing, I assume, Mr. Dean, discuss further about that, how they will be utilized accordingly. But second, I just want to overall commend the county. I'm president of the Legal Women Voters of Lower Marion, Norbert, I've been on the State Board, I've worked in elections for a long time, and I can tell you, there are many counties that do not commit to spending resources, even when they're offered, to make sure all voters can access the ballot box. Now, you may not agree, which it appears we have some that don't agree, with how people are voting, but hey, it's, as Adrian Seltzer just said, it's good to have options. If you don't think you want to use a ballot box, fine, use the mail, but the mail isn't as dependable, so great, you can go in person, or you could go to a satellite office, you know, many other counties don't even have those options. So I just want to thank you, because you're committing to providing those options, and it's not rocket science, when we have more options, more people vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
That is all for public comment.
Okay, that's it. Any closing commissioner comments? Hearing none. Upcoming meeting dates, our Board of Elections meeting will be immediately following our Salary Board. The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be September 5th at 10:00 a.m. in the boardroom. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the August 15, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, as there are second. Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and meeting adjourned. Next up, Salary Board.
Hi, I'm here. My video is disabled, but I'm, I don't know why, I'm not on video.
Great, thank you, Controller Sanchez. All right, is there any public comments on Salary Board?
Yes, first up on public, Salary Board is Christine Laura.
Hi.
Hi.
Would you prefer to do?
I would prefer.
Okay, thank you.
I'll come back.
Okay, yes. Okay.
So then also would be Paul Heaton.
Okay, well, we'll do that.
Okay. Then that is it.
And our district attorney, would you prefer to do it afterwards, or now?
Whatever, whatever's your preference.
Three minutes versus unlimited amounts of time. So we'll do everyone, we'll do everyone. So let me invite our, oh, Catherine Hailin, I just got very confused, to review the Salary Board presentation.
Good morning, Salary Board members. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. The list consists of new positions, new hires, other transactions, and a listing of employees going off hold. It's a six-page document dated August 14, 2024, with a timestamp of 10:55. All transactions have been reviewed by management and presented for your consideration.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the August 15, 2024 Salary Board presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Hailin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? So I'd like to invite.
I mean, is there, if there's no comment, we just move forward.
Can you guys just let me handle this? Okay? Thank you. Can you come on up? Yep, thank you. Well, yeah, that's what I was told to do. Come on up.
Okay. I know that you are about to vote.
Yes.
But I will just say that I wanted to say to you, Commissioner Winder, to Commissioner McKeisha, Commissioner DeBello, who gave me the time to speak with you, and also to Controller Sanchez, that I wanted to take a moment on behalf of my entire department to first express my gratitude for the time that you gave us to speak to you about what's going on in my office, and should your decision be to grant this request, which I certainly hope it would be, for your decision to augment our staff. Your commitment to addressing the needs of our community and recognizing the challenges posed by the current caseloads is truly commendable. We are so grateful. With the addition of additional lawyers and administrative support professionals to our team, we will be significantly better equipped to provide quality representation to, that every individual deserves that we represent. This support not only would alleviate the burden on our current staff, but also aligns with the national standards for public defender workload and staffing. Today, this administration is set to show itself again to be leaders in this Commonwealth. We know this enhancement will lead to improved outcomes for our clients and will allow us to serve more effectively. Thank you so much for your support and for prioritizing justice in our county. Your leadership really does make a meaningful difference.
Great.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment before we go to a vote. So thank you for your leadership. I think we sat down less than a year ago, and we talked about some of the challenges that your office was facing. And in spite of those challenges, and in spite of the staffing issues, you all continue to rise to the occasion and deliver the type of defense that all residents that come to your office clients deserve. And so I want to thank you for helping build awareness about some of the issues that your office was facing, and, you know, I'm hoping that my colleagues will support the plan that you've put together in order to get your office to the staffing levels that you need in order to deliver for your clients the defense that they deserve. So, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you. And I'll just add that, you know, I'm really appreciative that you had a robust presentation and really walked us through the details in terms of what you and the team are experiencing locally, but also what Paul Heaton was able to produce in terms of his research, and really give us a sense around the state of where we line up in terms of how, how many hours is expected of each attorney in fulfilling what is really, you know, is a constitutional obligation for us to provide for every resident who is, is, you know, is in the system. And I think across the board, whether it's the courts or the district attorney's office, we all realize the need to make sure that everyone has the resources to provide that adequate representation, so proud to support this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I'm going to ask Paul Heaton, who's online, to jump in. Controller Sanchez, did you have something to say? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank you for your advocacy and your team's advocacy, and for really a truly wonderfully well-presented presentation. When we met, I was, I was just definitely impressed, hearing what you and your team do every day, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Controller Sanchez.
And Paul Heaton, are you, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here, thanks.
Great.
I'm sorry I can't be there in person with you, but I did just want to, you know, in my capacity as the Chair of our Public Defender Advisory Board, share this strong support that
I'm sorry I can't be there in person with you. But I did just want to, uh, you know, in my capacity as the Chair of our Public Defender Advisory Board, share this strong support that my fellow board members and I have for these investments. As Christine noted, right, the Constitution, both federal and our Pennsylvania state Constitution, guarantee access to representation. But we know that unfortunately throughout the Commonwealth, that constitutional guarantee has been undermined by persistent underfunding. We've done research that suggests that, you know, Montgomery County is not alone. Sixty out of 66 Pennsylvania counties have staffing levels that are below constitutional norms. But with this, what I view as a historic vote today, I think we're going to be taking a very significant step to close that gap. Uh, I would also say that even putting aside the constitutional issues, I think from a fiscal perspective, expanding the public defender makes a lot of sense. My own research shows that inadequately staffed indigenous defense services can generate tens or even hundreds of millions of dollars in additional taxpayer costs for incarceration further downstream. I think my own personal views, Commissioner DeBello, are probably closest to yours when it comes to fiscal matters. I think we need a very high threshold before we ask taxpayers, uh, to pay for services, particularly things like personnel, which represent ongoing costs. But I'm very confident that, uh, with respect to these investments and adding to our public defender's office, uh, that this is not only a necessary investment from a constitutional perspective, but also it's actually a wise investment from a fiscal one. Uh, so we're very appreciative. We're excited to continue to work, uh, with Christine and all of you and other county leaders to make sure the public defender effectively serves the needs of the people of Montgomery County. Also just mention that, I think, five years ago, it would have been almost unimaginable that our public defender would be in the solid position that it is today. And there have been great strides under the, uh, current slate of commissioners. And I think you should feel really proud of that. And we certainly appreciate your attention to the needs of the public defender. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a quick question for you.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Since we're going into the hard sell today. How long has it, you've been understaffed?
So, and Commissioner, I'll refer back because I know that we did have an opportunity to go through.
How long you been understaffed?
Well, under the current caseload standards, it would be an untold number of years at this point.
Exactly, that's, that's all. So here, here's, my, my whole point when, when we were presented with this is that I was, you know, we're adding a lot of positions and these are needed positions. And I'm, I hope that when we go into 2025, that we have serious conversations for other departments that potentially are understaffed, so that they become more of a budgeted item. What we're actually doing today is rectifying a situation that's been, um, going on for several years, as you mentioned, right? It's, this isn't something that just happened. This has been an issue of being understaffed for a while.
Indeed, and the caseload standards that we're talking about right now, of course, were promulgated in September of 2023. But even under the old standards, we did see a deficiency in the staffing. So right now, this, uh, action that the Commissioners taking is really significant to right-size staff the public defender's office. We've needed it for some time. And that has come into what we would call maybe a sharper relief, uh, now that the new caseload standards have been, well, they've been published, they've been accepted by the, this, the public defenders throughout the United States.
Right.
What we're doing right now is kind of a monumental move on behalf of Montgomery County, leading the Commonwealth and trying to fix this.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to invite our DA up.
Christine and I coordinated up blue outfits. All right, so part of the District Attorney's Office is a county detective bureau, which operates at an extremely high level. One of the things that we have unfortunately seen, uh, in our community is a dramatic increase, uh, in the number of threats. And these threats, um, are to county departments and others, uh, to name a few that we have, uh, unfortunately seen was voter services, intimidation of staff and electorate, Montgomery County Youth Center, threats to staff, uh, Office of Children and Youth, threats to staff, adult and juvenile probation, threats to staff, magistrate district judges, threats, um, to the NDJAs and their, and their staffs, uh, Court of Common Police or Trial Court, uh, here in Montgomery County, um, and court administration, threats to members of the bench and staff. That's not, uh, the entirety of the threats. We have also seen significant threats, um, in the schools, um, to staff and students, to public offices, uh, and public officials, um, as well as places of worship, um, in our county. Uh, so there, there was a national, uh, look that was, that was really pushed by the, the FBI on, um, what can be done, uh, as a prevention strategy, um, to deal with these type of, um, issues and, and phenomenons, including active shooter, uh, phenomenons. So the, the conclusion of the best, uh, thing to have is a threat assessment and management team to be able to address these, uh, issues as they are, as they are coming up. Um, and, and if you look to, uh, the state of New York, they actually have, uh, have, uh, legislation and, and governor's order on this, that each county has to have, uh, this in place. And, uh, the, the main component or a big component of it is a, is a threat assessment management team. So what, what, what does that do? It would be a multidisciplinary team, uh, to identify, assess, manage threats of violence, reliance, uh, working closely with our, our, our local county, um, state and federal partners, um, on, on this. We find that individuals that are intending, uh, violence, um, it, it's usually not a spur-of-the-moment thing. It's, it's something that has, um, developed over time. There are warning signs that can be identified if you're communicating and working closely together throughout this. And so there is significant potential to disrupt violence. So we have put forward and asked, uh, for a unit within our county detective bureau, um, which would be led by a lieutenant, uh, and has county detectives staffing it, um, with an analyst to, to work with them. And the, the, the goal, the main goal, um, of this, um, is to prevent violence. I think we are, um, in a spot where, um, we are positioned well, um, to be able to do that. So I would ask, um, for your support, um, for this unit within the county detective bureau. And I know because it involves staff, um, for me, I get a vote. So I'm voting for it. I hope you will, will, will join me in that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
No, I, I, I mean, you're right. I mean, it's not that you get a vote, no. But, uh, I mean, it is, it, it, the FBI came out, it was like, what, two weeks, three weeks ago, that they raised the threat level across the United States. I mean, there's, it's cause and effect. I mean, every, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why what's going on. But the, the threat levels are growing increasingly across, uh, major metropolitan areas. And, um, it's just sad that, you know, decisions that are being made are causing these type of levels to be increased, then which causes us to have to take further actions, which then causes additional taxpayer money to cover. So it's just, it's just a continuous rolling, um, you know, and, and you're, I, I support and agree with you wholeheartedly that the staff and everyone that you mentioned, deserves the, the, you know, the, the protection, uh, for all the hard work that they're doing. Because you, you talked about several of the departments that are out there, you know, every day. And we need to be in front of it, uh, to ensure that they're, we're supporting them and, and making sure that they're secure in their efforts.
I think that's, um, something that I, I, I appreciate your comments on this. A lot of people come to do public service here in the county and, you know, they, um, they should not have to deal with, you know, threats to their life or their office, um, in this. And, and I hope, um, with this, and I am confident that, that we will be able to prevent crimes from occurring, um, by putting together the right individuals, um, to do this proactively, um, as opposed to what a lot of, um, law enforcement has done for, for a long time, is react to a problem, go show up and, and work it. If we can identify these things, um, we can prevent violence.
Yeah, that was what I was going to say, is that the key word is proactive, right? So as we sat down with you and we talked to your team about, um, the current state and status quo, you know, for me, it was about being proactive. And I want to ensure, I think, why I'm for this, to ensure that no county employee, no county employee or elected official comes to work feeling scared or worried that somebody might harm them. And especially heading into this election season.
Okay.
We're seeing a lot of incivility, right, uh, from our friends and neighbors. And so, you know, I'm really excited that our team, your team, will put together this team in advance of this season that we're heading into. And that it will be something that we focus on, uh, in the years ahead. So thank you, uh, to your team for putting together a great proposal.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I would just add that, um, I know this is not going to be easy to stand up quickly, particularly before, uh, the election, but you know the urgency of that. And, uh, if we can work together to make sure members of the public or even all of our poll workers or other individuals who work in voters are aware, if they see something that is suspicious or could be a threat, where to notify or where to send that information so that we can make sure it's, um, you know, properly handled and administered. That'd be great.
Okay.
I think communication's the, the key to all of that. And, and working with all of our partners, as I mentioned, like, that's, that's it. And we're well-positioned to do that, um, because that's what we've done historically. We're on some federal task forces on things. So, um, I, I believe we are well-positioned to, to accomplish this.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're going to move to a vote. I'm going to, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, um, next up, I'm going to call Tom Bonner with a podium. So anyone that looks at the Salary Board details, I think it's on the Salary Board Details, they'll know that you are leaving the county for an awesome, awesome opportunity, uh, at Amtrak. Tomorrow is your last day, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And, um, while you and I have not had that much time to work together, I just want to say thank you, uh, for your leadership and work, um, on really just optimizing the way in which government works for the people of Montgomery County. And, um, you know, I don't think Lee would have, you know, been a, you've been a real right-hand man to Lee, um, and especially ushering in a new administration. You've been at the table, uh, supporting all of us in making sure, uh, that we don't step in shit and that we're focusing on the right thing. It's true, it's true. But, you know, it's always hard when someone leaves an organization, especially somebody that has done great work. But the true, um, kind of mark as a leader or things that leaders look forward to is seeing people spread their wings, um, and seeing people have an opportunity to take on, uh, new challenges. And I know while we're sad to see you go, um, as a leader, um, I'm excited for you to spread your wings and I look forward to seeing all that you'll accomplish in your new role. So, uh, from, from me and the rest of the county, I want to thank you for all that you've done over the last, how many years?
It's been a minute.
Just shy of eight.
Yeah, that's a long time. Uh, thank you for, for your leadership, so.
Yeah, that's something. Are we allowed to say what you're doing? Or she already said, I'm sorry. So I'm very excited.
You're allowed to do whatever you want.
I do have your cell phone number. And, you know, as, uh, many may know, Tom has overseen very big, complicated projects like the Justice Center, but tends to leave before they're done. And.
It's a tornado.
I think that the Amtrak 30th Street Station is now going to be overseen by Tom, which is a huge, uh, $500 million project, which is a massive, um, project. And I, I will regularly call you because I am definitely one to frequent Amtrak. I still have a lot of points. And, um, and I'm just excited to see that get done. And everybody in the region's going to use it. And hopefully we'll have a plaque somewhere to thank you, uh, on that, but.
We're going to need you to make it, though.
Yeah.
Check.
Yep.
Well, I was just saying, everybody's saying nice stuff about you, so I guess I'll continue. I have to, I can turn my speech up that I originally had. No, I mean, I mean, unfortunately, we didn't spend, we're only been together a few months, you know, so I haven't had the opportunity to spend the last eight years with you. But at the short time that I've been here, I've always appreciated everything that you were doing and, and your candor and your, you know, anytime, any questions I had, you're always, you know, right there to be able to answer them. So I appreciate that. I'm also excited that you're going where you're going because, as you know, I sit on the, the School River Rail Project, uh, which I was going to give an update today and I forgot, but I will do it next week. But hopefully we're going to be working together as that project continues to materialize as well. So, uh, I hope to be coming down to visit you for, for, uh, ongoing conversations. And I want to extend a huge thank you for making Lee look good all these years. So now we're going to have to see what happens.
Yep.
Well, you certainly will be missed.
Well, thank you.
Tom Bonner.
Oh, boy.
This is a uniquely prescient moment. I have the controller actually also here as well.
Yes, Karen, sorry.
I, no, sorry, I'm sorry. I, I have worked with you for eight years. I can't believe it's been that long, but, um, seriously, best of luck, um, in your new role. And, um, and it's been a pleasure. So thank you so much for everything you've done for Montgomery County.
Certainly likewise.
I want to jump in and start by saying, I cannot believe I was not the first person to curse in a board meeting. Now the pressure's off.
Broke the ice, right?
I know.
I try to, I generally try to keep it classy.
I do, absolutely do, I absolutely do. Well, uh, Tom, I have to say, I've always admired and remarked on your ability when we got employees at this meeting, right? When they're longtime employees who are retiring and the, the thought that you put into the remarks that you've made for people who have worked on your team. And, and I'd sit here all the time thinking, God, it sounds like the person Tom's talking about, he has worked with Tom, like, at the same desk for 20 years, right? I mean, the personal anecdotes, the, uh, you know, the bits from the early parts of their career that gave them a boost and made them feel part of the county family. And like the relevant parts of today about why we love the people that we, we work with. It's always so thoughtful and the time you put into it and everyone's like, wow, I feel like I know that, that person. Well, I'm not doing that. I will tee up a special guest that we have on video. And I hear for the first time ever in history that the volume from Barbara O'Malley is low. You'll have to listen closely. I have no idea what she's about to say, so.
That's very nice.
Hello, I'm Barbara O'Malley, former deputy. Hello, I'm Barbara O'Malley, former Deputy Chief Operating Officer of Montgomery County. Commissioners, executive leadership, staff, and county residents. It is my honor to talk today about Tom Bonner. When he called me and maybe give a talk about Tom, I mean, when I volunteered. I had the pleasure of working with Tom for over seven years. In that time, I had a variety of titles, most of which never existed before the decades. Frankly, some people never quite understood what Tom's job was. Tom's job was everything. He was Tom's good and kept it good. Tom somehow makes things possible, possible. Me and I would talk and identify what would have to happen next. And then we'd say, well, who could we get to do something like that? And invariably, the answer was Tom. And much to the chagrin of anyone who worked for Tom or was waiting on Tom for a meeting or paperwork or signature or an agenda item, we had pulled him into yet another project and they had to wait. and they had to work on it. Things that weren't part of his job description, things that weren't part of his department. He brought him into it for the simple reason that we knew he could do it. When our county, like every other county in Pennsylvania, needed to figure out how to implement mail-in voting in the midst of COVID, a whole lot needed to be done. When their to-do list flipped their timeline and said, well, who could we get to do this? And the answer was Tom. When we needed to get funds out to small businesses in the midst of COVID, and needed an application scoring system to get our funds to our businesses quickly, we said, well, who could we get to do something like that? And the answer was Tom. When Hurricane Ida hit, and we needed a system to coordinate the hotels people were staying at, the funds they were receiving, the staff that were assisting them, we said, well, who could do something like that? And the answer was Tom. When it came time for the county to figure out how to allocate over $160 million in ARCA funding, we did not take the easy route. We could have contracted with someone to tell us what to do, manage the funds for us, and spend it mostly through our own county department. Instead, we asked ourselves, what would it look like if we didn't take the easy way? What would it look like if we really wanted these funds to have as much impact as possible? If we truly wanted to involve a community equitable and transparent? And so we asked, well, who could we get to do something like that? And the answer was Tom. When we needed to update our compensation study and recognize our people knew our jobs better than some consultant, and we should just make an internal team, and we needed a leader, he said, well, who could do something like that? And the answer was Tom. I assure you, I could go on four hours with examples like that. In fact, looking at this video, when I asked myself, who could improve my lighting? I was fortunate enough to have Tom say a few words about me in January, although now I realize that Tom was forced to do that quietly, which is meaningful. My phone did light up with texts while he was speaking, people texting me, asking if I was watching. I was not, but I went back later and listened to some kind words that he said about me, and I was very grateful. And one thing stood out. Tom talked about how we fought. I'm sure there are people listening to me right now who were either in the room or down the hall when we would get animated. It was never really fighting. We both cared very much about Montgomery County, the job supporting the people of Montgomery County, and most importantly, supporting the workforce of Montgomery County. We just wanted to make sure we got things right. And that is one of Tom's best qualities. He will constantly push you. He won't give up on making sure we're doing the right thing. He's not gonna go easy on you for any reason. He will push you to be your best. He wants you to be your best. He will make you be your best. He's the best colleague you could ask for, because he demands no less from himself. When Lee and I became a leadership team, we had three rules. Do good things for the county, always act ethically and legally, and have fun while doing it. And I'm glad to say, while we didn't get to everything, we follow those rules, and Tom Bonner is someone who makes sure it happens. I wish Tom well in the next phase of his career. I have absolutely no doubt he will be tremendous at whatever he does. He will crush it, because that is what he does. He will be missed here, but his work and impact will live on for many, many years. Residents and colleagues will benefit from the work he did, the people he trained, the business he built, and the future he inspired. And while they won't know who did it, the answer is Tom. Good luck, Tom. You will be great.
So with the keep this brief, obviously, because he's been here for a long time, with the sole exception of making me stand up here for all of this, I need to say thanks to you. Commissioner Winder, obviously, you came in last year, and I was excited, we were all pleased, and you have been impressive since you started, and I've been honored to work, certainly with you, and then Commissioner Mekesha and DeBello having come in at the beginning of this year. Truly, you know, I haven't been here as long as, for instance, Barbara and a lot of people, as long as Lee, but, or as long as Maureen, but certainly the work that you've done has been impressive, and you are in excellent hands with Lee. Damn it, Barbara. With Lee, with Maureen, with your solicitor team, with your senior management, and frankly, and I need to say this as clearly as I can, everything that was said, what Lee said, what Barbara said, was not, would not have been possible without your staff, without your 2,800 or so county staff. You have the best team, and it actually feels, that's the part that is most, as you can tell, emotional for me to leave. It's a magnificent team. All the stuff that she talked about, that Lee talked about, that you do, that Maureen does, that John Marland, that Dean Dortone, that everybody here and in every department, Jean Sword, and Karen Sanchez, and Tom Landauer, this team of people that has dedicated their lives in Montgomery County is among the best I've certainly worked for, and it, you know, makes it difficult to think, like, as I was just texting with Lee, like, what are you gonna do next? Who's gonna be there? And so the answer is, put simply, not the people that worked here. So I'll leave it there. Thank you very much. One of these days, I'll get my hands around not being able, being able to get through this, but really sincerely, thank you. This was very kind of you and completely unnecessary, but thank you.
Thanks. It's the least we could do, and that's always, whenever I've had to leave an organization, the hardest part is leaving the people behind, but we'll, we'll make sure we take care of them, so, all the best. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the August 15, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.